The board meeting, business meeting, the Grosse Hill Township Board of Trustees. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance. Okay, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Those of you watching at home, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:56. The entire board is present. We'll continue the business as presented. Yeah, with that, let's see. Tonight I'll entertain additions or deletions to tonight's agenda.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Budney.
Is this on? Is this? Yeah, it's a... Yep. Yeah, I guess. Yes, I would like to make a motion to delete action item number four from the agenda.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by Trustee Budney, seconded by Trustee Malvesto to delete action item number four.
The reason, the reason I'm asking for this is, first of all, it's a very serious issue, not only for the Police Commission, but just for the township in general, removing commissioners who have served for a long time on a commission. And the packet that we were given gives us no information as to why this is being done. So, we're basically being asked to vote on something and we got no backup material whatsoever as to why this is being requested. The backup material that we did get was telling us that we could do this. That was never in question. That isn't part of the issue. Secondly, I don't believe this issue was, is really being brought properly. We have people on a, on a commission who deal with a department. What we should be seeing, in my estimation, is we should be seeing a complaint either from that department that they can't work with these people, or from the commission that they, that that commission can't work with these people. We have none of that. Further, further, we also have as part of a single action item to replace those two individuals with two, two people that have been picked by, not the board, but two other peo-, I'm assuming two other people, the people that sign, you know, sign the legislation. I just think procedurally, commission members are usually picked by the commission. And I don't, I wouldn't see, regardless of how you did on the removal, that this couldn't be done with these other, you know, with replacing them. I'm really troubled with the, the first part of removing, because I see no reason. I, I have, have not heard, and I spoke with the, spoke with the, the commission, and I spoke with the Police Department, and no one had a problem with them. So, have, giving that, that there's, there's no reason given to us for this, I would like to see this removed. And in fact, I would just add, as a side, that if this wanted to be pursued, that maybe we should have a board meeting, or a, a board study session to discuss this, because the board hasn't been made aware of what's going on here. That's my comments.
Mr. Supervisor, what I would respond with is, we all sat, there were six board members that were present for the last Police Commission meeting. The sole exception to that was Treasurer Van Oss. But, Mr. Van Oss certainly has been on this township board for as many years as anybody, and can ask any questions, as can anybody else. I would indicate that I also sat and spoke with Mr. Budney for a period of time. I appreciated that opportunity and courtesy, Jim. I very much welcome that, and we had an extensive conversation. As to whether or not members of the management team wish to have these two retained, I would indicate to you very clearly that the management team has told me that they are tired of being micromanaged, they are tired of being, having essentially a pinata where they're knocked around. We're gonna have a surprise every meeting or two. I am prepared tonight to lay out the case for the removal. I am prepared tonight to lay out the case for the reappointment, or the appointment of two new members. This is not something that is easy. It's not something that's pleasant, but it has been a long time coming. And the six of us that were at the last, last commission meeting certainly saw some of the worst, the worst conduct we've seen. You've seen it here before at other township board meetings, and it is time to end the show. It is time to put this to rest. It is time to start supporting your management team. Support Chief Warnock, he's been here eight and a half months, he's doing a very, very good job. Support Deputy Chief Harden, he's been doing a very good job. When it came to the deer calling, he was the lead man on that, and has all the answers for us. And Lieutenant Pellon has been with his department for two and a half decades. He does a good job. Let's take away the micromanagement. Let's take away the bullying that's been going on, and let these gentlemen go ahead and do their job.
Well, you're right, Carl. I was there, and I, I'm sorry, the, there were commissioners who were focused and were forceful with their, with what questions they wanted answered, and weren't getting answered to, and, but I didn't think, I certainly didn't think anybody was really out of line. I've seen a lot worse. I've seen a lot worse at our board meetings.
All right, other comments?
Yes, I've, I've, I've sat and talked with all three of the named members of the management team. And no time has, have they ever brought that up to me. Our conversations were open. I, I wasn't looking for anything as, you know, particular, but we have had conversations. So, I'm, I'm not sure where that's coming from. I did attend the Police Commission meeting. There were some heated conversation, but if I was to, if I was to hold against, hold, you know, hold a heated conversation against somebody, I can think of a number of people. I, I, you know, I, I have to suffer through listening to self engrandizing pompous rhetoric, but that's not simply a reason for asking them to be removed from their position. It's just their right. It's just their right. I may not like it, but it's their right. It's their opinion. There has been nothing brought before this board, seven elected officials, to have any reason to remove these two commissioners. There has been no formal complaint of any kind, either by the chair of that commission or by anyone else. So, I don't know where you're coming up with this at, because it's, it's, it's just not true. It's a lie. And when, and when you, and when you make phone calls, asking for a resignation, and then stating, "This is the direction we want to go," well, who, who is "we"? Name the, name, name the other individuals who are in agreement with you that want to go in this direction, because there has been no discussion on this amongst seven elected members of this board. It has been behind closed doors, and it's just, it's, it's more like a vendetta than anything else.
Do you want to talk, Tom, about the, the promotion process, how we handled that, and how that became a show? Do you want to talk about the retiree healthcare disaster and fiasco that's cost this township in excess of a hundred thousand dollars?
We're talking about separate, other, other, other items, things that have nothing to do with it.
Stop, stop, stop.
Please call a question, Mr. Supervisor.
I'm calling the question. Let's, we're gonna vote on it. Roll call. Trustee Bletcher?
Aye.
Trustee Nelson?
Aye.
Madam Clerk?
What are we voting on?
What do we?
What are we voting on, sir?
The question is on the removal. So, do we retain?
No, no, no.
No, no, no.
There's a motion on the board.
Repeat the motion, repeat the motion, please.
To delete?
To delete.
We need to vote on that first.
That's, well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm saying. The, the question is, so,
Nay.
Trustee Bletcher, nay. Trustee Nelson?
Nay.
Madam Clerk? Supervisor, nay. Mr. Treasurer?
No.
Trustee Budney?
Aye.
Trustee Malvesto?
Aye.
Okay, the item stays on the agenda. Other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Malvesto?
I request that we remove action item number two from the agenda. We, and I-
Support.
Tell us more.
Then I will, I will, I will give you my reasons. We were provided with a rather large document, just a matter of a couple days ago. There has been, we took time to talk about a waste hauling contract, and we talked, took time to talk about communications this evening. But yet, there's been no discussion in regards to this corrective action plan. I have, I have a lot of questions that I'd like to ask. I'd like to know where some of these figures came from. If in fact, we're gonna have to make a payment to the state, how much, how much is that going to be? Where's that money gonna come from? Who came up with the 6% interest? 6% interest?
Did we not have a presentation at the last board meeting on this subject?
Not really. There was a presentation, but that was on, that was on, that was on other information that we had to work with, not on the corrective action plan that's, that we're being asked to approve.
Well, I think, well, Ms. Darsnak will be presenting us with the figures and what they mean tonight.
So, I'll have, what, five minutes to, to listen to this? And then somebody will call, call the vote? If I don't, if they don't like my questions or what I'm, I'm expecting?
How long is this information?
We need to sit and have a study session and go over this. There is still time that this can be submitted to the state, but until this board, seven elected members, sit and talk about this, it needs to be tabled.
Okay, other comments? I think we're ready to go on that. Those in favor of deleting action item two, we'll do another roll call. Trustee Bletcher?
No.
Trustee Nelson?
No.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Supervisor, no. Mr. Treasurer?
No.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
And Mr. Malvesto?
Yes.
Okay, motion was, uh, motion fails. It's staying on tonight's agenda. All right, we have no presentations.
I do have another request.
Oh, both, by all means. Mr. Malvesto, go ahead.
I would like to enter a motion to, at the last board meeting, we approved two separate contracts. One was for some removal of dirt, and one was from an installation of a drain. I'm doing this in two sep-, because there were two separate items, I'm gonna request two separate motions to remove, uh, put this on there, to put these items on hold. First thought, and, first off, because, number one, we were led to believe-
Do you have a second? Do you have a second?
Second, okay. Number one, we were led to believe that there was a bid package submitted, put out, and the, the two applicant, two responders responded accordingly. There was no bid package. It was merely calling up and asking two different people what it's gonna cost to move a pile of dirt, what it's gonna cost to put in a, to put in a drain. Now, the pile of dirt, it's a $50,000 pile of dirt. It's not a $500 or $5,000. It's a $50,000 pile of dirt. The correct, the proper procedure for submitting applicants, having applicants submit bids for this was not followed. The drain, that's a Wayne County drain. I don't care if, if Wayne County is gonna forgive the, you know, permits and inspection fees. It's still a Wayne County drain. It's been that way for years. It does not need to be repaired right now. And it just appears that it's being done for a special interest. I, I'm asking that, you know, two separate motions, that, that the bid for the, to Compo for the pile of dirt, and also for the drain, we vote to put that on hold until the proper bid process is followed.
So, you want two, two additional action items?
Yes.
One for the removal of the dirt hill, which was approved by the board?
Yes, sir.
And one for the, to delay or to not consider the repairs to the county drain on Sunrise Park property?
Correct. It is not our drain, it's a Wayne County drain.
Understand, we have a grant to do this.
It's still $50,000, and the bid, the proper bid procedure was not followed.
We're standing here with all the facts out there.
Would you, would you provide the bid package for me?
I don't have it.
Why?
Why do I have to have it?
Because it's not on tonight's agenda. Those in favor of adding two-
Question, Mr. Supervisor, if I may. Ms. O'Connor, your department is responsible for putting those documents together. Was that properly done? Do you know? The bid package and all of those? Brian? I was not present for the last meeting, so that was the question that I had.
And the, and the, and that coming to light, because it was talked about at the meeting of bid, bid, bid. Tom went to get, to look for the bid package, and there wasn't any. And the other thing that, when you, now that you know there was no bid, the troubling thing is, who did we ask? We asked a commercial parking lot paving company for, for a figure to do something that isn't in their normal course of business. So, it just doesn't look right.
Is there any, will we lose the grant if it's not executed forthwith? It is time sensitive?
And my guess is, that's why they didn't go out for a bid. But somehow, they knew they needed to give, they couldn't just go to one, one, because they could, if that were the case, they could have just give it to the one person.
But you, you have not, you have just done what you accused the board of doing to you, and not provided any background information in advance. If you had wanted to remove or reconsider these motions, there is a proper process and procedure for doing so. Boards can do so. But again, now, we're all sitting here guessing at what it is that you're, you're driving at. We have no back, background information to go on.
Well, it's, it's, it's-
So, I suggest that before our, you know, our next meeting, that you bring that information to us, so we can actually act on it with information.
So, do it next time.
All right, I'll be, I'll be happy to. I'm, I'm sure that Manager Ream will give me the, the information I need, the copies of the bid package, and then we can present them.
Mr. Ream?
Last board meeting, I believe it was either, what was it, as, prior to the last board meeting, if I, if I remember correctly, there were two quotes received, and it was reported to the board that we didn't do formal bids, because we didn't want to spend the extra money and the engineering to do so. So, if the board is concerned about that receiving quotes, then you always have the right to change your mind. But, it was done with quotes.
They weren't bids, that's just it.
It was done with quotes. It was requested quotes. Okay, so it was not a, there was no formal bid documents that were prepared by the engineer, and there were no formal sealed bids. It was quotes.
So, what we're left with then is either use the grant, $50,000, to achieve the purpose of the removal, or we can go ahead and live with the hill as it is, or we can pay for it out of our general fund. Is that correct? Those are the three options?
Well, one of the things that we do not have is the approval from Wayne County at this point in time. And if I had to venture a guess, would it come within two weeks? Maybe, maybe not. Holding off two weeks is not an issue at all.
Well, and I recall we were told that you weren't, we weren't gonna go forward with any engineering until we had a consensus that it was a project that we wanted to pursue it.
And, and the engineering review was, the engineer met with the baseball groups, and they're putting together the layout on the field configuration. And actually, one of the proposals actually is taking up room that I know the Recreation Commission wanted to use for some other items. So, that's, that's being reviewed as well at this point in time.
Time sensitive, is it?
It, it's gonna depend on the weather for the rest of the fall. And it's gonna depend on when Wayne County will actually release those funds, because we're waiting for their green light approval.
Okay, if it, if it is in fact time sensitive, and we, and the board in toto wants to reconvene this, we can call a special meeting and, and reenter it. Right now, we're not gonna, I, well, I'm gonna ask the board if they wanted to add these motions to rescind those previous decisions.
Well, again, I, I guess I'm not, you know, we don't have the language for the motions that we are rescinding. We don't have any backup for this. So, I suggest that if there is a problem here, that even though it might have been nice for the board to discuss this sooner, that we now move forward, and we say for our next meeting, let's look at these motions again. If a board member has a problem with the, with the motions that were passed previously, it would have been nice to know that before we kinda sat here at this meeting and, and had something kinda tossed up out of the blue that we can't go back to. Because you, it is valid to rescind a motion.
And Tom, I would have brought whatever we needed if I knew they were gonna have to do this tonight. But I don't read minds, last time I checked.
Well, if I had expected a phone, returned phone call, I would have, I would have made that to you, and I would have requested that. But I suppose it's okay that we do not, we do not follow procedures.
Enough, enough. Do we want to add the motion, the, the two motions or not? Trustee Bletcher?
I think, I think we need the information, as long as we're not gonna lose the grant. That's where I'm at.
Uh, the question is, tonight, do we add two, two action items to tonight's agenda?
No.
Trustee Nelson?
No.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Supervisor, no. Mr. Treasurer?
No.
Trustee Budney?
No.
Trustee Malvesto?
Obviously, yes.
Okay, there was any other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right, with that, I'm gonna beg the board's indulgence. I assume most of you are here tonight because you wanted to opine on the action item four on the Police Commission action. Does anybody want to talk about anything else? Okay, I'm, what I intend to do is open up the public comment on-
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, well, let me, let me, let me finish my, my, my plea to the board. I'd like to split the public comment and open up the public comment now on the first three agenda items. And then, once we get those wrapped up, we'll open it up, public comment again for action item four. Board, any disagreement?
Good. That's a good idea.
Okay, with that, I'll open up the public comment to the first three agenda items. Okay, okay, I see no hands coming up. So- You want to talk?
Action item number two.
That's in the first three. Mr. Hile?
I'll make this brief. I know this is going to be a long night, but I have some concerns that are similar to what-
Name an address, and you've got three minutes.
I'm Bill Hile. I'm on East River, and here on Grosse Hill. The Township Board Packet has 120, I've written this down, so I didn't mess up, has 120 pages of new data that is very complicated. The trustees received it a few working days ago, and it's not enough time, in my opinion, to them, to develop a working understanding of it. There's been approximately 160 days that have passed since our previous submission was rejected, and has any contact been made with personnel from, say, the Michigan Treasury or the Municipal Stability Board to better understand what all this paperwork means. What I'm saying is, do we really understand what we're looking at, what we were doing? Does this document tell us what the financial impact will be upon the township? Do you know? If it does, I mean, what, what is the financial impact of the decisions that we're making? What's it gonna do to our budget? What I'm saying is, is if we can't answer questions like these, we aren't representing the citizens as we should. And if we, if the answer to those questions is yes, I'm saying that we do have the ability to delay, let's gather more information and make a more controlled decision. That's it, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Hile. Any other comments on the first three action items?
Can't see everybody.
Okay, with none offered, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Brian. Consent Agenda 19-035 are the minutes of the August 13th, I'm sorry, 12th, 2019 regular meeting. Check registered dated through September 6, 2019. Grosse Hill Country Golf and Country Club firework permit, disposal of a DPS pickup truck, pre-application conference, lot spit configuration 289895, Coleman Drive Lot Number 404, and Grosse Hill Land Conservancy Lot 405, Albemarle subdivision.
Support.
Okay, moved by Treasurer, seconded by Trustee Budney. Any discussion among the board on tonight's consent agenda? Okay, nothing offered. Those in favor of approving consent agenda 19-035, please signify by saying aye.
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 None offered, that stands approved. Let's move on to tonight's action items. Action item number one. All right. Financial stuff. Recommend that the Grosse Hill Township Board of Trustees approve the attached Notice of Intent Resolution for capital improvement bonds.
Support.
Okay, moved by Supervisor, seconded by Trustee Budney. Short version is, we're gonna go out for bonds. I'm gonna have, Mr. Darsnak, are you gonna, you are the expert, fill us in on-
Um, this has been going on for the, by the Department of Public Services, that we're gonna go out for bonds in the amount of $6 million for water mains that need to be done. We discussed this during the budget process. The major water mains that are gonna be done are Park Lane, that was approved by the Township Board, and which has almost been complete, of $1.2 million. The other water main replacement is Meridian between Thero Fair and Douglas, Douglas Rightaway, and Church Road between West River and Meridian, including Colonial Court and Implement Court, in the amount of $3,450,000. Of the balance of $1.2 million is going to be a major improvement to the wastewater treatment plant that was a necessary of deed. So, we've looked at this part of the budget. The reason we can do this at this time is we have had several bonds fall off that we were paying for out of, this is all DPW water rates and sewer rates. We expect that the rates, we've already adjusted, just the sewer rate only, water rates did not go up, and we did that as of July to anticipate the sale of these bonds. This is the first notice of intent. This needs to be published in the newspaper for 45 days, where though, 10% majority of the voter population could rescind from us from doing this. But, at this point, it's just a notice of intent. No commitment has been made. The projects have, the Park Lane has been started and done, but this has been ongoing from the DPW Department for several months now, in the creation of these bonds and the water main improvements that need to be done.
And I just want to add to that, and I'd ask this of you again, to say, this is not gonna raise anybody's rates.
Nope.
This has been-
Right, this has been budgeted as of July-
Budgeted in.
From last year. No additional increase.
Okay, it's a continu-, continuation of the, how we fund the capital improvement programs.
Yep.
Any other discussion among the board? Okay, I will have to read, and bear with me, I'm gonna have to read this entire resolution, because that's what the clerk wants me to do. Okay, so, the intent, the Notice of Intent Resolution for capital improvement bonds. The following preamble and resolution were offered by Supervisor Loftus and supported by Trustee Budney. Whereas, the Township of Grosse Hill, County of Wayne, State of Michigan, the Township intends to issue general obligation limited tax bonds pursuant Act 34, Public Acts of Michigan 2001 as amended, in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $6 million, the bonds, in one or more series for the purpose of paying all or part of the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping water supply system improvements, and part of the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping water supply system improvements and wastewater treatment plan improvements, together with all related appurtenances and attachments for the project. And whereas, the Notice of Intent to issue the bonds must be published before the issuance of the bonds in order to comply with requirements of Section 517 of Act 34. And whereas, the Township intends at this time to state its intentions to be reimbursed from proceeds of the bonds for any expenditures undertaken by the Township for the project prior to issuance of the bonds. Now therefore, be it resolved that, the Township Clerk is authorized and directed to publish a Notice of Intent to Issue Bonds in the News Herald, a newspaper of general circulation in the Township. The Notice of Intent shall be published as a display advertisement, not less than one quarter page in size, in substantially the form attached to this resolution in Exhibit A. The Township Board does hereby determine that the foregoing form of Notice of Intent to Issue Bonds and the manner of publication directed is the best method, is the method best calculated to give notice to the Township selectors and taxpayers residing in the boundaries of the Township of the Township's intent to issue the bonds, the maximum amount of the bonds, the purpose of the bonds, the source of payment for the bonds, and the right of referendum relating thereto. And the newspaper name for publication is hereby determined to reach the largest number of persons to whom the notice is directed. The Township makes the following declarations for the purpose of complying with the reimbursement rules of Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. The Township reasonably expects to reimburse itself with proceeds of the bonds for certain costs of the projects, which were paid or will be paid from available funds of the Township subsequent to 60 days prior to today. The maximum principal amount of debt expected to be issued for the projects, including insurance costs, is $6 million. A reimbursement allocation of the capital expenditures described above with the proceeds of the- with the proceeds of the bonds will occur not later than eighteen months after the later of I, I guess that's little one, the date on which the expenditure is paid, or II, the date the project is placed in service or abandoned, but in no event more than three years after the original expenditure is paid. A reimbursement allocation is an allocation in writing that evidences the Township's use of the proceeds of the bonds to reimburse the Township for a capital expenditure made pursuant to this resolution. Item five, the Township hereby approves the retention of Miller, Canfield, Paddock, and Stone PLC as the Bond Council to the Township in connection with the bonds. All resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution, be and the same hereby are rescinded. That's it. Those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None offered. It carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, you'll be signing it and sending it on to, uh, wherever it goes, the county. Okay, Action Item Number Two.
Mr. Supervisor, can I just make a quick, um, there may be chairs in the hallway that you can bring down into the meeting room. I noticed there's a few people, um, standing in the back. Thank you, Mr. Nelson, for bringing that up.
Not a problem.
All right, Action Item Number Two, Correction, Correction Action Plan Retirement Health Benefit System. I'll introduce one also, this one also. Recommend that the Groceal Township Board of Trustees approve the attached Correction Plan Retirement Health Benefits System.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Moved by the Supervisor, thank you, seconded by Trustee Buddy. Mrs. Darsnick?
Yep, um, actually, every year, um, as of our audit dated, uh, March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, we received, um, that we did not meet the requirements of Public Act two oh two, which is the funding of our, um, retiree healthcare. So, at that point in time, the data was as of, this is our big difference, and this is why the difference is. So, when they did the actuary report for the fiscal year dated three thirty-one eighteen, where we did not comply with this Public Act two oh two, was because the data that we're using was of an actuary dated of Mar, or March of two thousand and seventeen. So, the data we provided to this date was an old actuarial, um, valuation report. Um, things changed constantly in this area. Once, before GASB required that you do a valuation report on your health fund every three years. So, our data was old because it wasn't required. We, I wasn't going to do anything that we didn't need to do or spend money on reports and, um, federal demand, or state demands that we don't get money for, that we have to keep doing. So, our value, our data was old, as of seventeen, um, numbers. Well, during that, between the evaluation, old valuation, and the new valuation that I knew we'd need as part of our audit dated March thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, um, I knew we'd be getting a new report, and I didn't want to spend the money last year to fix this correction, when I knew by September thirtieth of this year, I would deem another twenty, uh, one thousand dollars of an actuarial report required by state law. So, when we did the new report, um, I knew there'd be a lot of changes because we did a lot of changes. Um, some of the major changes we did that weren't incorporated in our last year's figures when we didn't comply with the state was that, um, we talked about this all the time, the hard cap. So, we made sure that we were meeting the hard cap as to the letter of the law. Um, we also changed retirees when they're eligible for, at the age sixty-five, that we no longer had the retirement. Through the process, we were making contract negotiations, and we were making changes to these programs that I knew would affect the liability at the end of the day. Um, one of the biggest areas of improvement is the state required, and I kept doing whatever the state required in the timing frame that they required me to do stuff. So, um, we ended up, they said for us to get anywhere, we're going to have to build a trust. We're going to have to adopt a trust. So, we adopted the trust. So, the state says adopt a trust. So, um, numbers, again, changed dramatically, daily, because of things that happen in this industry with healthcare and, um, our pension liabilities. So, um, if you look at the report dated March thirty-first, two thousand, um, seventeen, our unfunded liability was twenty-five million dollars. Well, of course, that puts a scare on everybody because it's a huge number. Um, and we had a required contribution of almost one point five million dollars, which, um, we couldn't make. I mean, that wasn't part of our budget. So, the state was putting these high requirements on, and, and our, and we got to remember a law changed again. We were never required to fund healthcare. Now, all of a sudden, the state says we should be forty percent funded. So, you can't change things daily and make us keep up with them. So, this is the process, and I know I'm, I'm going on, but trying to get to the bottom of, of simple terms. So, when we redid the, this is the changes, major changes that we did caused major changes in our numbers. So, when we did the new actuation, um, our unfunded liability went from twenty-five million to almost fourteen million. Just by the things that we did. So, it almost cut it in half. And our required contribution went from one point five million to a little under a million, which we were, could afford because that's what we're paying. Um, so, at the end of the day, all these, all these reports that, that they said were provided was done by an actuary. Gabriel Roder Smith, who are one of the most noticed, recognized actuaries in municipal government. All this, all those assumptions and standards that they use in these reports are industry standards. Nothing was coming out of my office. Um, I just gave them the details and the, um, censuses and where people are and their ages. So, all this is very methodically actuarial standards across the board. So, when they redid our numbers, and we talk about the state's triggers, which was forty percent funded, which we're not. And the other trigger that the state allows is that our required contribution is within twelve percent of our general fund, of our total governmental revenues. So, two years ago, and these actuaries, and I'll tell you right in the actuary documents, these may change based on assumptions, based on, so they change daily. So, what, what we are doing today is when I got these new reports back, we are in compliance. Um, we will be in compliance with our retirement healthcare system in the state's mind, um, as of March thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. So, I'm correcting the action plan for last year, and then come March thirty, comes, um, September thirtieth, I will have to file another report that's goes where we are today, and then they're going to accept our waiver or not. This is just an ongoing process. So, I can tell you right now, financially, the things we have done, we are meeting the compliance of the state requirement for Public Act two oh two as it relates to, um, retirement healthcare benefit systems.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to repeat what I've said a number of times on, on Public Act two oh two. It was a kind of a blind sight at the, at the Township's, uh, Township's Association Conference, as we, this was being explained to us by one of the law firms. This is, this was just, it was just poorly crafted. It's the, the intention is good, that townships, cities, municipalities, those, and there aren't that many, considering there's, uh, over two thousand cities, villages, townships in, in the state, there are not that many that actually offer healthcare. Not that many have full-time employees out of the twelve hundred and forty townships. So, there aren't that many that offer benefits, uh, even less than a few years ago. But this just came out of the blue, and as, uh, our MERS rep referred to it as the Public Shaming Act, where the idea was to get people to focus down on this. Now, one township funds their healthcare, their retiree healthcare by resolution every year. They have no commitment, so the act didn't apply to them. But their commitment to their retirees does apply, so they fund it by resolution every year. Uh, I don't think our unions would be real happy with that if we tried to take that approach. And contractually, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that, but this is all based on assumptions. The, I think the state went in and computed our deficit poorly. Um, there was no need for us to put money aside in a trust to fund it until this act came out, and all of a sudden, it has to be forty percent funded. Every community got blindsided by that, by making it a requirement, a statutory requirement. But now, we have MERS responded, establishing their trust. It's turning a whole lot better rate of interest, rate of return than, uh, the idle funds we've had, uh, you know, in the general fund. So, a big plus for us on that. We're making interest on that. Their assumptions on the annual increases in healthcare were way off. We, we, we're in the last three years, were we zero to three percent?
We're at the hard cap, which is two to three percent, and they were using the industry averages as fifteen percent.
So, significant difference in how the numbers are going to compute.
Right.
And I think they were computing interest, returns on investment of around three percent.
Yep.
And we're getting, what, six and a half, somewhere in that range.
That's what the industry standard is.
So, again, these, the numbers we have are good for today and today only. They are assumptions. But they're dramatically different than when the state attempted to compute our predicament. They were way off, and our numbers came in much better. Again, they're only good for today. They're only good for right now, as far as we know, because they're assumptions.
Right, that's what I'm saying. This is, this is going to be a continuing effort. We're, we're right on the line. We're meeting the state's standards. We're right on the line. It's one, one minute, six months it's going to make it, the next six months it's not. I mean, even with my pension, uh, probably at March thirty-first, I have to report it's not, even though our actuary says it's over sixty percent, because that's required by law. It says it's sixty-one percent, but GASB makes it change down, it goes down to fif, like, it's going to be fifty-four, fifty-five percent. So, again, and then I have, um, and I'm just being honest now, the interest rate swung two point million, two million dollars in about three months. So, I can't control that. That's something, that's going, what I'm going to report to the state. And then again, we're going to, six months from now, we're going to have to report again. It's just going to be this ongoing reporting nightmare for me. And there's really, we're going to continue as is because we're meeting the requirements.
We're meeting the requirements, which means we're paying down the known debt.
Right.
So, we're pay, we're not going to pay it off this year. We're not going to pay it off in the next five years, but we're paying down the known debt. And we've made changes into our, uh, retirement programs, both pension and healthcare.
They will change over time, but it's not going to go tomorrow.
Yeah, change the costs over time, but it's going to take time.
Yep.
Other, enough, and other questions from the Board?
Yes.
Mr. Buddy, I'm sorry, Mr. Malvesto.
Because the six and a half percent interest, um, made such a large difference in the numbers, what did the six and a half percent interest?
That's industry standards. With the state of Michigan, that's what all the, they're using on all the actuaries. Yep.
And whether you have or whether you have to, if you were to write, have to write a check today.
And, uh, it's a funding mech, we're not writing, I'm not writing no check today. I'm putting money, I'm investing the way the trust is. I'm not writing a check.
Would, would we have to, would we have to pay? What would it cost us to pay down our debt, whatever we owe today? Not, I'm not talking about the total. If you had to write a check today to pay onto that debt? Do you have, do we have to do that or not?
No.
All right, so there's, there's no.
We're as is right now.
These are some of the questions that we sat and talked.
Yep, no, yep, no, we're good. We're not doing any more or any less. We're paying our premiums as they come due, and we're investing in the trust, and the budget doesn't change.
We're paying premiums, but we are not paying anything additional.
It's making its own money right now, and they, over time, it will. We're budgeting, remember, we talked about how I'm funding the trust. I'm funding the trust at April first of five million, of half a million dollars, and it's sitting there all year until I draw it down and reimburse myself. And it's gaining all that momentum, and then next year, we do it again. And so, it, it builds slowly, but they're saying over time, this is what they're using the numbers. They know exactly how I'm funding it, and this is actuaries, this is what actuaries do. It's all a, a projected guess. But the numbers fall within my parameters to, to satisfy the state requirement. And that's what's the most important at this point.
Ms. Budney?
Yeah, uh, um, the, uh, in the actuarial report, it stated that, that Gabriel Roder was told that we were going to make additional payments. I didn't see anywhere what those additional payments would be, or, you know, where we would get the money for them.
Right, and, and that was, they were all budgeted. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, and I, and in looking at this and what's before us is, is really not that because it's, it has to do with us not being in compliance, and now we are in compliance, correct? We will be in compliance, so.
Right, yes, yes, based on your budget.
So, we won't actually, we don't actually have a plan that we're going to have to follow for the next five, ten years.
Nope. Nope.
Paying back or doing anything. We don't have to worry about the forty percent funded part.
Nope.
Uh, however, uh, um, I mean, for the state purposes.
Correct, correct.
Need to make sure, though, and have to think about funding properly so that we actually pay the benefits to our people.
Right.
Um, so where was, to get back to the report, it stated that, that, you know, we were going to make these extra payments, and I couldn't find anything in here.
Okay, well, we budgeted the, the, um, extra payment, the state shared revenue required by law, so we, that is in the budget, and that was an eight thousand dollar budget. And then, what I will do, or plan on doing is, I'm putting a hundred percent of all retiree benefits, and then I'm reimbursing myself for the medical only. So, I, if there's any extra money, people are dying, like, if they're, that stays there because we, we're going ahead of time.
Right.
So, we're going to put as much extra payments we can at that budget time, and if it, if it.
Okay, but we're not, we're not like saying, we're going to put another five hundred thousand in or anything like that. Okay.
No, no, we're not, no, extra, no, 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 no.
And that was part of my.
No, no, we're doing it as we budgeted this year, just normal routine benefits.
Thanks, Ann.
Any other questions, comments for our Finance Director? Okay. And thank you for the more detailed explanation. I hope, uh, everybody here is satisfied that we're, 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 we're on the right track. Those, so we've been briefed, briefed and exposed to the Correction Act, corrective action plan. Those in favor of approving the corrective action plan as presented for Retirement Health Benefit Systems, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None offered, it's approved. Thank you, Mrs. Darsnick. Uh, okay, Action Item Number Three. Mr. Budney?
Yes. I'd like to have a motion, a proposed motion based upon, uh, a recommendation by the Department of Public Service Commission, the Gro, to the Groceal Township Board hereby approve a contract with priority waste for the provision of residential waste hauling services based upon their bids submitted August twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, moved by Trustee Budney, seconded by Treasurer Van Oost.
I, I, I do have a little more there that I'd like, just, uh, just like to throw in. Uh, the scope of the services to be provided would be weekly solid waste collection, residential yard waste collect, uh, yard waste collection, and weekly curbside recycling service. Approval is contingent upon a satisfactory review of priority waste financial records by the Township's Auditor Yo and Yo, and approval of the contract by legal counsel.
Okay, still moved by, uh, still seconded by Treasurer Van Oost.
Still supported by.
This was the, the topic of, uh, much of our, uh, study session, uh, prior to tonight's meeting. And I'm, I'm going to start with commanding the Public Service Commission and our new Public Service Director for just the incredible amount of work that went into this to get the right fit, or as close as we could to the, for the needs of the township. And I'll let you pick it up from there, Mr. Budney.
All right, well, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, I'm going to, I'm going to ask, uh, Derek and, uh, and, uh, Bill Kastig to come up. Uh, uh, we did, we had a, a subcommittee put together of, uh, Bill and myself, Derek, uh, Phil Kennedy, and Brenda, Brenda Cloutier. Thank you. Her name escaped me there for a minute. Uh, uh, and we did, uh, uh, we interviewed the two lowest bidders. We spent, uh, the day we did the interviews, we spent, uh, over five hours here, uh, going over their interview and, uh, over their bids and, and looking at this. And then, uh, the, uh, subcommittee also went out to priorities, uh, place of business, uh, looked at their trucks, looked at how they operated. We actually followed a waste hauling truck on, uh, uh, on their route just to see what kind of work they did and how they did it. So, uh, we've, uh, we feel that we've put in, uh, the proper due diligence to come forth, uh, to the Board to ask, uh, that priority waste be, uh, given the contract.
I'll begin. Good evening, everybody. Uh, this is a very complicated and complex issue, as you know. It involves a lot of variables. Uh, I just want to recite that our commission, over the last several months, has been working on this. Our contract with Waste Management expires November fourteenth of this year. And given the fact that if we were going to use them, it'd be simpler, but, um, if we had to choose another vendor, that there's required time to buy trucks, hire manpower to serve our community. So, we got involved in, we got started in this last, the April, and began discussions. We had verbal discussions with Waste Management in May. But on June twenty-sixth, the subcommittee, our subcommittee of four of the commission members, we met with Brian Conaway, who heads up Waste Management, to talk about. we met with Brian Conaway, who heads up Waste Management to talk about where they are with our pricing. And we learned from them very clearly that they feel they've given us a good deal and they have for a number of years. So with that, the implication at that June twenty-sixth meeting was that there was gonna be at least a thirty percent increase in our costs. Now, each year we spend about six hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for waste hauling, recycling. That doesn't include a cost at the landfill that's separate. We use River View's landfill. So, we learned that there was gonna be a substantial increase in cost, plus Waste Management said they wanna change our service delivery to all automatic where all the residents, like myself and all of you, would get totes. Only one for refuse and one for recycling. And that was gonna be a change and they were gonna limit the amount of extra things. And if you drive around on refuse day, you certainly see that people are setting out all kinds of things for refuse. So, so the, on July ninth at our DPS commission meeting, we discussed this for quite a while and decided that we were gonna go out for bids. Our new director, Derek, did a fine job putting together a, a competitive bid proposal um, for receiving bids for a six-year period. Three years is the base, but we, we got bids for six years. Uh, very itemized bids, unit price bids. So, we made that decision July ninth and on August twenty-first, we received four bids. There were two, two bids within the range of our current financing. And I will tell you that Waste Management's bid was almost a million dollars. So, from six hundred and forty thousand to almost a million dollars. So, we had two bids that we could deal with and then on August twenty-seventh, the subcommittee met for over five hours. During that time, we gave an interview to two, the two low bidders, in, in excess of an hour for each firm. And, and we discussed numerous issues with them, a ton of questions which we've shared with you. And we think we've done our due diligence. And Derek, Derek's gonna outline the proposal, but our recommendation's gonna be that we go with a firm called Priority Waste. They're based on Macomb County. And, um, then the eve- then on August twenty-eighth, a subcommittee, including Derek Thiel, uh, Phil Kennedy, who's here in the audience, and Mr. Budney and another one of our community or commission members, went and toured their facilities, looked at the new equipment they've purchased that would serve our community, looked at their manpower, uh, inspected their sites, their maintenance, their garage, their mechanics, and, um, came back with a very positive report. We held a special meeting a week, last week, uh, December, I'm sorry, August twenty-ninth, December. A special meeting August twenty-ninth. And again, we spent over an hour and a half discussing this issue, the various, various variables involved, including much discussion about our recycling program. I don't know if anybody saw it, but, uh, two, two Sundays ago on Sixty Minutes, there was a segment on recycling. Anybody see it? And the indication was, I think the figure was that over seventy-six percent nationwide of what we recycle ends up in the landfill. What we've learned in talking to the developers, or the providers, is that a good portion of what we recycle here and throughout southeast Michigan ends up in the landfill. One big reason is some of the foreign countries that were taking plastics, for example, are no longer taking them. China's one. And a lot of the loads, the things that are recycled pollute, contaminate the recycling bin and when it's all dumped on the floor, it's contaminated, so it's gotta be disposed of in a landfill. So, recycling is an issue that we're gonna continue to talk about. But the service level that we're talking about now is to provide the same level of service we're having today, including recycling, the disposal of yard waste and waste hauling. And with that summary, I just wanted to indicate the amount of hours and discussions that the DPS commission has held on this matter. And of course, we met with the township board in a study session earlier. Mr. Malvesto?
Um, I appreciate, you know, in our study session, you, you went over in depth. The one, the ones, the one topic that didn't come up, I don't know why, how about yard waste? I mean, we're talking about our, our household waste and our, and our recyclables. How about yard waste?
Yard waste program's gonna be the same.
Okay, I just, I just wanna be clear.
Be the same.
Because we, we talked about household waste and, and recyclables. I just wanna make sure yard waste was part of this.
Yeah, still the same.
Thank you.
Derek?
Uh, just for the benefit of the residents, as, uh, the chairman had mentioned earlier, our current contract with Waste Management expires on November fifteenth, so our new contract, uh, with Priority, if it's approved tonight, we'll take over after that. So, you'll have a new vendor, uh, starting, I think the fourteenth is on a Thursday. The following Monday would be your new vendor. An additional, uh, item that was part of the proposal that the township in this, in the recommendation from the DPS commission is being asked to approve is to move from a, what is currently a five-day pickup, okay, to a two-day pickup. So, those residents that are picked up on Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, the two-day pickup would end up being on Monday and Tuesday for the entire township. So, um, in order, or in, in selecting that option, uh, we actually received a two percent reduction in the overall cost of the services. And I think the, the DPS commission and the subcommittee also thought that with the majority of your waste being generated on the weekend, as well as your yard waste on the weekend, a Monday and a Tuesday pickup, uh, is preferable for the residents, especially those that are picking, being picked up currently on Wednesday, Thursday or Friday. You don't have to hold that weekend's garbage, uh, till later in the week. So, I think, we think that that's a, a benefit above and beyond the savings in addition to less traffic on the roads, uh, with garbage trucks being in town two days rather than the current five. So, that's a, a bit of information we wanted to distribute to the residents. As far as getting information out to the residents, uh, as part of the bid packet, um, we request that all vendors, including their pricing, an educational component, uh, for, uh, the residents. So, they, they will receive a mailer prior to the services, starting that state, um, you know, introduce the new vendor, the days they'll be picked up, uh, recycle information, yard waste information, um, uh, so that the residents aren't, you know, kept in the dark about what's happening and that they're informed about the change. So, residents will be seeing that. Uh, we talked a little bit about cost. Um, the, the rates that we received from Priority, all things considered, are only about four thousand dollars more per year than what we were paying, uh, Waste Management under their contract for the same level of service. So, the industry has been changing drastically over the past couple of years. Uh, prices have gone quite up, uh, have gone up quite a bit as compared to what they were, uh, three, four years ago, uh, with some changes in the amount of vendors that are in the market. So, I think that the township did receive some pretty good pricing, uh, through the competitive bidding process. Um, so, I think we're taking advantage of that competitive process in order to try to levy, um, competition for the benefit of the residents. So, um, in saying that, uh, if there are any questions about, that's about all of that I have. Um, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
I think we have, for our purposes, we asked all the questions in the study session. Um, and you answered, the, the, the big change people will see would be the two-day-a-week pickup. Uh, we are also concerned about the, the complaint process. If, if a pickup is missed, uh, will there be someone we can contact to get that corrected? That's been taken care of. Uh, we also, and what, what neither speaker's brought up, uh, one of the things we liked about Priority or that the commission liked about Priority was they, they pay a somewhat higher wage than the standard waste hauling firm. It allows them to retain their employees. What that means to us is a driver who knows his route, we get a new driver every other month, he's gonna get lost in his route. There will be missed pickups. There will be streets missed. We saw that happen occasionally with Waste Management. Uh, Lorinda was always capable to get ahold of somebody and they route him back. But with, if we keep, if they can retain their drivers, their crews that are serving, they'll know the island, they'll have their routes down and we won't have those missed areas where we have to, to have to make the calls. So, I see a lot of advantages. I'm glad you, you dug as deeply as you did and, um, I think, I think we'll be happy with the new service if the board approves it. Mrs. and Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And Derek, I, I, I know that you've already mentioned this, uh, touched on it, but to all the residents in the township that are hearing that there will be changes to recycling, considering that we've spent twenty-plus years teaching our kids through the schools and through, um, various programs, the values of recycling, um, that, uh, you're, you and the commission are working with the vendor uh, to help re-educate us about how recycling will work in the future. So, we're not giving up on recycling. It's going to change, hopefully for the better.
Yep, so initially, we're gonna start out with and continue the curbside recycling service. Um, as Chairman Kostic had mentioned earlier, the industry, as far as recycling goes, has changed drastically as the waste industry has over the past three or four years. With the type of materials being taken, the commodity value, a lot of it was going to China. They're not taking that now, so a lot of the commodity no longer has value. So, I think the township with the vendor will be looking at some different ways to potentially modify the way we do our recycling so that more of it gets used and less of it gets, um, thrown out or gets sorted as trash at the, uh, single-source, um, uh, recycle facility. So, I, I think that residents can expect to see something in the near future about potentially changing the, uh, the curbside, single-source service to more of a sorted service, maybe a drop-off location. Um, and obviously, if there are any cost savings associated with that, that would be passed along to the residents. 'Cause I think the goal here is to try to make sure that more of the product goes into the recycle stream and less into the landfill. And if that means we might have to modify some things, um, you know, we need to make sure the residents have a say in that. Um, and I think that's our goal is to, to, to provide some education and to review the, the township residents' opinions on that and then go down that road potentially if it, if it works out to be the best option for us, so, yep.
So, I'll continue with what I brought up earlier today is, as, as we know, the recycling, recycling programs industry is just dramatically different. As we were told all those years ago, throw everything in the bin, we'll recycle everything. Well, now they recycle almost nothing. And for the, I mean, presumably, we all want to do our part to, you know, preserve, preserve the environment, make the world a better place. But to bulk load our, our recycle bins when probably seventy, eighty percent of that is going to the landfill anyway. Basically, all you've done is doubled the, uh, transit time. You've put more trucks on the road, more wear and tear on the road, more, uh, pollutants and carbon dioxide emissions because of you're hauling this stuff twice. So, that, we will have to get an education program out there because that, that industry is changing. It, it has changed. It's leaving us behind. Part of the education as we, as we move on. Other comments from the board? Uh, uh, as I said, we sat through forty-five, sat through, that sounds like we didn't enjoy it. It was very informative. Uh, an excellent job was done on this and, uh, you to be commended for bringing this change. So, and with that, with no further comment from the board, based on a recommendation by the Department of Public Services Commission, the Grozeal Township Board hereby approves a contract with Priority Waste for the provision of residential waste hauling services based on their bids submitted on August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. The scope of services to be provided would be weekly solid waste collection, residential yard waste collection and weekly curbside recycling services. Approval is also contingent upon a satisfactory review of Priority Waste's financial records by the township's auditor, Yo and Yo, and approval of the contract by legal counsel. Those in favor of approving the contract, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none offered. Again, uh, well done. Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, uh, a couple of the principals of the company are actually in the audience tonight. Um, I think it probably, uh.
Since we approved it, let's introduce them.
Uh, so this is Vince Hoyompa and Todd Stamper. Um, so at least you guys have a name with a face, uh, and they can introduce themselves.
Yeah, please introduce yourselves.
Todd Stamper, thirty-nine-hundred, uh, Christopher Street, Hamtramck, Priority Waste.
Vince Hoyompa.
Uh, on behalf of Grozeal and the board, we appreciate the work. We're gonna do a good job for you guys. And we are gonna inform you on recycling 'cause it is changing rapidly and it's, it's, we gotta do stuff with it. We, we gotta figure it out.
Thanks for coming tonight and, uh, I would just say welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, residents.
Okay, well, that might be that last happy moment.
About a happy note.
Yes, yes.
Okay, as I said, this is, obviously, we have a contentious item here, um, action item number four. And Mr. Bletcher? Oh, I'm sorry, I'll open up to public comment.
Mr. Carmazin? Hello. My name's Greg Carmazin. I'm speaking here tonight as a board member of the Grozeal Civic Association. I'm also representing the interests of my mother, Nancy Carmazin, who is a fifty-seven-year owner of a house on East River. I pay the taxes for this property and I am her fiduciary. I'd like to thank the township board for the opportunity to comment on the agenda item number four, which is being sponsored by Township Supervisor Brian Loftus and Township Board Trustee Carl Bletcher, who is the Township Board liaison to the police commission. I'm speaking tonight to express the GICA's strong opposition to action item number four, which is a motion to remove Commissioner Mike Jurecki and Commissioner Bob Zalasko from the Township Police Commission. I'm also speaking on behalf of my mother and many longtime friends living on the island who believe that Commissioners Jurecki and Zalasko are men of high character and outstanding ability who deserve to remain on the Township Police Commission. I would like to bring to the attention of the township board four specific points in opposition of option, of action item number four. First, during the police commission meeting on December, in December of two thousand eighteen, then-police chief Joe Porzarelli discussed the plan for the deer call to take place in January and February of two thousand nineteen. The entire police commission was in complete agreement with the plan, which was to utilize four highly experienced deer call hunters who served as the township's, uh, seasonal or temporary employees receiving in-kind con- compensation, totaling approximately nine hundred dollars per man for two months of, of work. The structure of this plan was implemented in two thousand nine by then-police chief Bill Barron and was annually continued substantially in the same manner by his successor, uh, police chief Joe Porzarelli through the two thousand eighteen deer call. It's my understanding that the police commission only learned in January of two thousand nineteen that the township manager decided that the deer call could not take place the way it had with the four deer call hunters because of some vague, vaguely defined concern about liability and workers' compensation insurance. At that time, Commissioners Jurecki and Zalasko started to pointedly question the township manager for a full and detailed explanation. After not receiving this requested information for nearly eight months, the township manager attended the police commission meeting on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen and was directly questioned by Commissioners Jurecki and Zalasko as well as members of the public. I attended this meeting.
You have about thirty seconds.
And I directed a number of questions about the deer call to the police commission. Once again, he refused to provide complete answers for providing any written documentation or discussion during the meeting indicating the problem repeated, with repeating the deer call as has been implemented for the past ten years. It was noted that, uh, there's no significant problem with the deer call program at that meeting in this regard, where no claims are made on the township's liability insurance or worker compensation insurance since the inception. Second, given the complete.
You're, you're, you're past your three minutes. We're gonna have a, we're gonna have a long night. I'm enforcing the three minutes tonight.
Well.
Thank you, Mr. Carmazin.
You cannot.
But you can pick up where he left off.
Well, it's, it, you know, it's unfortunate because obviously, as you, as, as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Supervisor, this is a contentious issue and it is complex. And I've, I've done a lot of research. Tell me where you're at and I'll take over.
Right here, second, okay. Uh, my name is Luke Kraus. Uh, you can stay if you want or you, that's fine. Luke Kraus, I live on two four eight two eight East River Road. Um, I'm gonna take over where Greg, um, left off. He had put together a fine report here. Um, so, and second, given the complete agreement among members of the police commission that the township deer call was highly successful, I decided to research, Greg decided to research, the issue of whether or not the deer call hunters were covered by workers' compensation insurance pursuant to the state law. He called the Michigan Workers Disability Compensation Agency, WDCA, in Lansing and got the contact, in contact with Cheryl Cornelia?
Cornelia.
Cornelia, who is the administrator of the Compliance and Employer Records Division. The Compliance and Employer, uh, Records Division, uh, is a part of the agency that ensures that employers are properly providing workers' compensation insurance coverage to employees. They would be the first place to go for any employer seeking clarification about corrective implementation of a workers' compensation insurance program consistent with the mandates of the Michigan Workers Disability Compensation Act. He described the township deer call program to Mrs. Cornelia?
Cornelia?
Cornelia.
Cornelia, and she told me, him, that the township deer call. And she told me, him, that the township deer call hunters would be considered by the WDC as seasoned employees or temporary employees who qualify, who qualify for workers' compensation insurance in Michigan because they receive in-kind compensation for their efforts and the township had substantial control over how and where they performed work during the specific period of time. They would be considered seasoned employees, temporary employees who qualify. It is my understanding that the company that provides the township with workers' compensation insurance apparently raised a concern about whether or not in-kind compensation was valuable enough to trigger coverage under the state law. We asked Mrs. Cornelia about the issue and she said that there is no threshold in the amount of in-kind or financial compensation that makes an employee eligible. But she also added that this eligibility issue could easily be made even clearer if the township paid the deer call hunters a relatively modest amount of money, but in her opinion, that action was not necessary. There is one other issue mentioned by Mrs. Cornelia about which the Township Board should be aware. She said it would be a serious violation of Michigan Workers Disability Compensation Act for any employer to attempt to misclassify an employee as an independent contractor or as a volunteer for the purposes of avoiding workers' compensation coverage. She also said that such action would violate the Michigan and federal government laws that protect employees' rights. During this approximate twenty-minute phone conversation, I believe that I found that the answer to most of the important questions being posed by Commissioners Jurecki and Zalesko, the answer is that the township deer call hunters were in fact seasonal, temporary employees of the township covered by the workers' compensation insurance. Third, if the township...
Your three minutes have expired, Mr. Kraus. Who wants to pick up from here?
Bill Heil, I live on East River. Yes, Uda, we're going to do this. I was watching your face.
Yeah, but I...
I'm done. I have three minutes.
You always want us to be succinct and so...
We're being succinct. You're just getting tired of it.
Okay, we're wasting time.
Okay. Third, if the township board removes Commissioners Jurecki and Zalesko from the Police Commission, this action will have a chilling effect on citizens serving all township commissions. The implicit message of the removal by the township board will be that if you remember the township board will be that if you dare to step out of line by questioning the township administration or the most influential members of the township board, you will be subject to intimidation and ultimately even public humiliation by expulsion from the township commission. This action would create a dangerous precedent that would be detrimental to transparency and accountability in township hall at a time when more of both are needed. In this regard, the GICA strongly urges Township Board to require the Police Commission to televise its regular business meetings live on GITV while making video recordings of the proceedings available to the public on demand through the township website along with the videos archived for meetings of other township commissions. If more islanders witnessed the Police Commission's meeting on August 20th, 2019, we may not be here tonight talking about action item number four because the discussion that night was very enlightening. Fourth, and finally, action item four seeks to replace Commissioners Jurecki and Zalesko with Eric Ranka and Jerry Matoli. They are longtime islanders that appear to have solid qualifications for service on the Police Commission. It is not clear that Mr. Ranka and Mr. Mariet Matioli want Commissioners Jurecki and Zalesko removed from the Police Commission, but there will be an appearance in the community that they did favor this action if they accept an appointment to the Police Commission in this manner. In order to avoid that perception problem and still obtain the benefits of Mr. Ranka and Matioli serving the GICA respectively suggests that the compromise alternative to the action item four would be the Township Board adding two more seats on the Police Commission so they could be added as Commissioners Sixth and Seventh Members of the Body. Other township commissioners, commissions have seven or more commissioners and perhaps the Police Commission would benefit from having more citizens on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody's here because of what they've been reading. I'm going to assume...
There we go. I'm going to assume everybody's here because of what they've been reading on Facebook. At no point did anyone from the Civic Association except for Mr. Heil speak with me regarding why we're having this action item. Chief Warnock? Yeah, we did. We did. We spoke on, I've got the time here. We spoke and I explained.
You explained what Joe Porzarelli called, which is not true.
Why was, Chief, you canceled, not Mr. Ream, you canceled the deer call for 2019. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Well, obviously, he's got the fun, but it was your motion to cancel the deer call. And when you explained the situation, Mr. Ream backed that up, presented that to the board, and there was no objection. The deer call has been handled by the Chiefs of Police, Chief Barron, Chief Porzarelli, and Chief Warnock. And Chief Warnock looked at what he had to deal with and decided he could not safely go forward with the call. It was his decision, again, his decision. He initiated, not Dale Ream. And your first onslaught was, and I corrected you on that, Mr. Carmazin, that it wasn't Dale who canceled the deer call in our phone call. It was Chief Warnock. And there was no corrections put out on Facebook. As to the workers' comp, what comp, I'm talking, I'm not blaming anybody. What I'm trying to clarify is what was put out on Facebook and what was the reality. Are they, Mr. Sardi, I'm going to put you on the spot, workers' comp.
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm going to refrain from making too many comments tonight because of the potential liability of the board and I don't want to make that a public information. I will tell you that what was presented tonight is a little bit of a concern to me. I'm not quite sure where the compensation, whether it be nominal or otherwise, where that money came from, where it was paid to, or in the manner in which it was. When Mr. Ream and Chief Warnock and I discussed this matter originally, it was my understanding that these individuals were volunteers and they were there. Don't know how they were paid, where that money was coming from, and with that, I don't want to make any other comments.
Okay. The term used was in-kind contributions. I don't know what that covers. I want to know what the in-kind contribution is. Well, I'm going to ask Chief Porzarelli because he was the one who was funding it.
First off, it's sad that you did blame me for this, Mr. Loftus, that you approached somebody and you said, quit shaking your head at me.
What?
All right.
I'm going to say, please...
You're going to behave yourself or you're going to leave.
You told this individual it was my fault. Are you going to deny it on TV that I was the fault of this deer calling program falling on its face? That's how I got pulled into it, Mr. Loftus. So what I did is, I went above all of your people because I don't trust your people. I went to the head of workers' comp in Michigan. I went to the head and Mr. Daley was at that meeting and it was very nice of him to confirm. Yes, he set me up with the head of Travelers. I had him covered. I had him covered both ways. Workers' comp, it's not even a question. Workers' comp and Travelers Insurance had them covered because there was in-kind compensation. I'll be more than happy to go over the books with Ann. I had to call her and tell her they were using my code for the two tanks of gas they got in their own cars. I gave them the credit card to go to Cabela's. They have it. It's in there. Nobody knows about any of this. So let's not argue and hide behind this tonight. It's about Mr. Zalesko and Mr. Jurecki questioning at the board level what was going on because somebody came to the Police Commission meeting and asked them questions. They just simply followed up. All they did was follow up. Now, would you like to answer why you blamed me when you spoke to this gentleman right here? That it was my fault that the Police Commission, I'm sorry, that the deer calling program fell on its face?
Do I want to kick over this? I still want to know why...
You can lawyer up if you want.
A reimbursement for a known and anticipated expense has become an in-kind compensation.
They were compensated. I was the chief of police. I compensated them. I compensated them. I have it on record. There was no hidden, it wasn't hidden, it wasn't, I had to call her and tell her my number was used a lot to get to the gas pumps and I don't want you thinking I'm stealing gas. So I had to explain every time I called her. You know, go on my credit card at Cabela's. I don't, that's, no, look, you're using, that's called deflection. Let's get to the real thing here. The real thing is these two gentlemen. Okay, it's on the agenda because you're going to kick them off tonight. It's not about Joe Porzarelli and deer calling. You're not going to answer. Maybe Tom will tell you. He probably shouldn't answer that, should he, Tom? Okay, he's going to lawyer up. He's a lawyer and he's going to lawyer up. So are you going to answer it? Because that really hurt me that you would tell somebody or a group of people that I was the problem with this deer, that's ruining my good name. I went out of this police department because I was gut punched enough by some of you. I don't like when my good name is being defamed, Mr. Loftus. Okay, I'm done here, but I'll be coming back.
Thank you, Mr. Porzarelli.
Mr. Loftus, just so it's clear, I don't need to lawyer up, Mr. Porzarelli.
That's, I don't know what you did. You didn't answer me.
This is a public meeting. We have protocol.
A public meeting and I want to make clear that my responsibility is to the board and to the township residents and I will not subject the township to liability based on acts of any individual, the board or otherwise. So I hope nobody takes it the wrong way, trying to do my job in the best manner possible. I don't think we need to get into those types of issues tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi. You burned up your three minutes, Bill. I know, I'm going to go out on a limb here. We spoke for, go ahead. All right, Bill, you've got one minute.
This evening, in a way, with all of us, describes what has gone on, in my opinion, with the commission. This circumstance with this attempt to get a hold harmless is a very difficult issue and in my own personal life and work experience, I can understand why Mr. Sardi is not wanting to comment. The issue has tremendous technicality in it and what constitutes compensation is very nebulous. The best example I can think of, and it's just crazy, but suppose we provide these hunters with 200 shotgun shells. Now, as long as there's been some kind of document that it's there for the purpose of calling deer, that is considered as not income. It's considered necessary to do the work. But just suppose that one of the hunters only shoots 175 of those gun shells and keeps the other 25. So help me, technically, it becomes compensation. And if that was it for 25 gun shells, if that man had a heart attack hauling a deer out, we would be on the hook for the liability. Now, that stuff is very nebulous and it's why we have men of sincerity talking with real conviction, which is what Mr. Porzarelli...
You're, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me finish it. You've got two men here who had as much care and concern as you and I do and that's all they did.
You're speculating beyond anything I'm willing to listen to any further.
Understand that.
I know you gave an example. You're trying to make a point, but what I...
Exactly right, Brian. That's what I tried to do. It's what I was doing.
I'm going to give a warning to Woody. I'm going to talk for a few minutes. I know you don't like to hear me talk, but, Mr. Heil, I appreciate what you just tried to do. I really do. I wasn't going to just jump into this discussion. I was hoping people would speak their piece, the board would speak its piece. But the way I look at this, one, it's not about the deer call. It never was about the deer call. And just to answer that question, why I think that is because we have a transition of management. We had one chief retire in October through December. We had another chief take over. There are going to be bumps in the road when there is a management transition. One chief does things one way, the next chief is trying to pick up the threads and is doing it the best way he knows how. And sometimes, things like the program fall to the wayside because the paperwork, the bureaucracy doesn't get done. And when we talk about compensation, there is a specific test for what constitutes compensation. And we don't have the documentation that shows whatever was called compensation passes that test for our current insurers and workers' comp providers. That said, we had volunteers do the program under one chief. We have another chief trying to pick up the program. He doesn't feel it's working the way he feels it needs to for the basis of township liability. So for this year, he decided it was best not to move forward. We also, at the same time, had an issue with the company that did, I understand, Chief Porzarelli even mentioned it at a prior police meeting, that at the time, Mr. Kostaroff's charity was not able to cover the cost of the butchering of the meat and that needed to be solved. So there were other ancillary problems that needed to be solved. So we have a manager in charge of a department making a decision and the board and the management team supported that decision. Unfortunately, that's become a political subject and I don't think anybody here wanted to throw or is throwing Chief Porzarelli under the bus. It was never a personal issue. And I would start this conversation by saying, nobody here on this board is questioning the integrity or the sincerity of Mr. Zalesko and Mr. Jurecki in performing their duties as commissioners. Nobody on this board, I believe, is questioning their experience, their professional experience or their loyalty to Groseal. But what we have is a difference of opinion of where the township board and these commissioners want to see the management and the direction of the police department. And commissioners serve at the pleasure of the board. Every step that they take in their purpose, any commission on this township ends up in a recommendation to the board and a vote by the board. And so if you find that there is a disconnect between the commissioners that are serving and what the elected members of the board, the elected, people elected by the community want to take the direction in, then you have to make a change. Unfortunately, this probably could have been done more elegantly, but in this case, we're just looking to have a management team be able to do its job without a consistent questioning and undermining of the structure that was put in place to support them.
I'd like, I'd just like to follow up briefly. I'm going to pose these as questions, but I'm going to save these till we get into discussion. But there was, for eight months, the information that you were talking about that we don't have before us has been requested for eight months and it's not been forthcoming. That would be my, that'll be my first question when we get into our discussion. And second of all, if this board is not questioning the reputation or the qualifications of these two people, why are we here? For what, just tell me, why are we here? Because if they haven't done anything wrong and we're not questioning their abilities, why on earth are we wasting our time on this? Why are we here tonight? And when we get into our board discussion, then you can answer me. But thank you.
Mr. Bletcher, would this be a good time for you to opine? He's questioning, he's questioning why we're here.
I think we still have...
Brian, let's get the public, you know...
Let's continue the public comment. Mrs. Walker.
Hello, everybody. Kathy Walker, Thorpe Court, blah, blah, blah. Okay. The reason I'm up here, I'm kind of disappointed. I'm not surprised, but I'm disappointed because this has happened in the past where commissioners or chairmans or commissions have been removed. In 2009, Darryl Froelich and Walt Ketcher were told that they were done and they would have been done if Mrs., if one of the liaisons had not stepped up. Then there was a bike path commissioner who got into a problem with the liaison. And then, of course, the communication... And then, of course, the Communication Commission was removed for some reason. And then, now in 2019, two police commissioners, two fine gentlemen. And I don't know why there, this is being addressed, but let, let me just read a few things to you that you've probably heard before. Certainly, the board has every right to evaluate whether or not a commissioner is fulfilling its role in outline within the parameters of authorizing resolution. However, in performing such an evaluation, the board must ensure the investigation is not one-sided, is transparent in every respect, that it includes dialogue with and input and feedback from the commission and commissioners involved. Anything less would appear to be a witch hunt, based upon a personal crusade spearheaded by a disgruntled member. The township board believed the police commission was overstepping its bounds or not doing its job, it was the liaison's responsibility to communicate such concerns to the commission in a timely manner, directly during a meeting. This is something that has been failed, they failed to do. Lastly, I believe the board would be remiss to approve such a motion without doing any advance due diligence, by the very least scheduling a joint session, study session between the township board and the police commission, at which all topics of concern could be openly discussed while being publicly televised in accordance with the Open Meeting Act. You heard this before, most of you. This is our, our clerk's words, when, when they went after our commission. Last, lastly, I'm just going to say, the board has every right to do what they want. But just because they have the right to do what they want, doesn't mean you should. And I totally hope that you will vote this down. These are fine gentlemen. Anybody would be grateful to have such competent people on their commission. You don't often get such talent. I thank you.
Bob Zalasko, Blauvelt, can I bring this up a little bit?
It's on the right.
Got it?
You learn something new every day, Tim.
I thank you for letting me speak, and I do appreciate, since Mr. Jurecki and I are the people on item number four, if you would let him follow, I would appreciate that too, and I'm sure he would. I'd like to first thank everybody for coming here tonight and giving your support. I'd like to start out by referencing the Police Commission meeting of July 8th, to put a peg in the ground here. During that meeting, the commission received questions from members of the community about the failure of the 2019 deer call program. It was obvious that many people had witnessed the increased population of deer on the island and came to voice their concerns and ask questions. Many questions were asked, including those about the insurance waiver that the deer callers were asked to sign. Unfortunately, these were the same questions the commission had been asking from months prior. Therefore, unable to answer these questions, the commission put together an action plan to seek answers from the township manager. The commission liaison had agreed to coordinate this effort. Unfortunately, this action was never completed, nor was it reflected in the meeting minutes of the August 19th meeting. During the 19th meeting, members of the public again asked questions and directed them to the township manager, who was present at the meeting. Members of the public again did not feel their questions were answered. Mr. Jurecki and I did not approve the meeting minutes presented because they were incomplete and did not contain the action plan that was put in, put together to, excuse me, to resolve these issues. We immediately were challenged by our liaison, Mr. Bletcher. On August 27th, Mr. Jurecki and I received phone calls from Supervisor Loftus, asking us for our resignation. Reason given, quote, "We're making some changes to the police commission, I'm going to have to ask you for your resignation." I can assure you that after 70 combined years of leadership experience in the field of management, finance, and technology, Mr. Jurecki and I are aware of the responsibilities on this police commission. As commissioners, we have a responsibility to the board, to the members of the department, but also to the people of this community. Not necessarily in that order, and to patronize just one area would be dishonest and show poor leadership. Mr. Jurecki and I did not follow the posture of the township manager or the liaison during that meeting. Instead, we chose to continue our support for the members of the community seeking answers to the questions they had asked. The request for our resignation followed, bringing us to where we're at today. Mr. Jurecki and I chose to support the people on this issue because it was the right thing to do. I and many of the people of this community supported members of this board in the last election, because we felt you had the necessary leadership qualities to move the township of Groseal forward. Action item four does not reflect good leadership. Tonight, it's not just about Mike and I, it's about the future of the police department, the future of the community. I sincerely hope that you don't let the voters that supported you down.
Thank you, Mr. Zalasko.
Well, thank you for, give me some time to speak here. Thank you for all the support here in the audience. I'd really want to-
We know your mic, Jurecki, but you have to say your address.
Elba Island. I want to thank all of our police officers and staff, past and present, for the wonderful job you do or did in serving our community. And if this is the last day I work with you in an official capacity, I wish you all the very best in the future. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Bob Zalasko for all the help and guidance he has provided to the department over the years. I have seen a lot of volunteers in my career, but I've never seen a volunteer more dedicated and devoted than him. In fact, I feel if the board was truly fair and just, they would replace Agenda Item Number Four with a resolution recognizing Bob's great service to our community. Some examples include him taking the leading role in bringing the license plate reader system to our bridges. May I add, this was the first in the state, quickly followed by the Ambassador Bridge and the Blue Water Bridge. If you don't know, at a minimum, this technology goes a very long way in protecting all of us, all the citizens of Groseal, 724, from dangerous intruders coming onto our island. I be, I believe this contribution in and of itself justifies the recognition recommended. Unfortunately, for the citizens of G.I., I don't believe I will be afforded enough time to go into the details of all of his remaining contributions, including but not limited to the development of a five-year financial plan, his leading role along with former Chief of Police Joe Porcelli, and the creation of numerous videos providing awareness, covering the many roles and services of what has been and what I hope continues to be our community's best-in-class police force. As for me, I personally would have been a lot easier on my family and I if I resigned my position on the commission. But I care too much about this community, kick the can down the road, and miss an opportunity to expose what I feel might best be described as dereliction of duties and malfeasance in our township manager and our board liaison in the handling of our deer calling program. Additionally, I believe Mr. Zalasko and my persistent and direct follow-up on the calling program concerning matters that they controlled, along with our expressed dissatisfaction and their lack of progress, is a reason why we are on the agenda today. There are good reasons why the two, there are no good reasons why-
You're, you're at three minutes. Do you want to, do you want to pass up?
It may be more efficient if you just let me finish.
You've got, you've got somebody volunteering to continue.
We've got plenty of people.
I got it right here.
Okay, right there, yeah.
Yes. Amy Jurecki, Elba Island. There are no good reasons why the 2019 deer call program didn't happen, nor why we are currently in a position that's best described as much less than optimal for planning and preparation of the 2020 call program. Simply put, there are three, three reasons why this is the case. Lack of transparency, communication, and accountability. At the December 11th, 2018 Police Commission meeting, it was no secret that we had a serious need for two, for the 2019 deer call. It was pointed out that vehicle deer crashes were up 64% for the first 11 months of 2018, compared to 2017 for the same period. Chief Porcelli stated that the deer calling program will begin on January 1st, and that approximately 150 permits from the DNR should arrive any day. It seemed as though despite the magnitude of our challenge, Joe had a good plan in place. At the January 8th, 2019 Police Commission meeting, now in charge, Chief Warnick, stated that the permit should be in next week. Although it felt as though we had some, lost some ground in the transition to the new chief, we still had 51 days to complete the call that takes place between January 1st and February 28th of each year. Significant concern was expressed again by the Police Commission as now we had full year numbers on vehicle deer crashes. They were up 81% in 2018 compared to 2017. At the February 12th, 2019 Police Commission meeting, the commission was informed that longtime deer callers, Bill Barron and Mark Fasonhammer, were asked to sign waivers of liability in early January and refused to do so. Moreover, this single act essentially canceled the deer call for 2019. Some of us on the commission were stunned by this admission, to say the least. The obvious question asked back then and continues to be to this day is, why the change now, when we have operated this program for 10 years without issue? Why is insurance an issue now and not before? What changed? Can we get copies of the insurance policy on the changes thereto that precipitated this action? Most importantly, why is the full commission only being informed of this major change now without having adequate time to study its merits and make changes if necessary to still salvage the 2019 deer calling program? Liaison Bletcher informed us that there was a liability insurance issue, and he would meet with the township manager and attempt to find out what it was. And the attempt to salvage the deer call for 2019 was essentially abandoned. From this point forward until the July 9th Police Commission meeting, various police commissioners, primarily Zalasko and myself, urged Liaison Bletcher to continue to work on Manager Ream to get clarification on many of the aforementioned questions without success. At the well-attended July Police Commission meeting, I agree to act as Chairperson and Commissioner Longton, as agreed to in the June meeting, in the June meeting, took the meeting minutes. During this meeting, there was a good exchange of ideas and numerous questions which were asked by citizens regarding the change to township insurance policies that necessitated a need for the waivers of liability to be signed. Liaison Bletcher advised that he didn't know that these changes were, and it would have to be taken up with township manager. Liaison Bletcher was again asked to follow up with Dale on this matter. At the conclusion of the meeting, it was broadly agreed by the commissioners, board members present, and police department management that we needed to have a study session to revolve as soon as, to resolve as soon as possible, the many open issues concerning the planning for a successful 2020 deer call. Additionally, it was agreed-
Okay, you're at, you're at four minutes into your three-minute speaking period. I'm going to have to ask you to, to, to surrender the mic. If you want somebody to pick up for you, I'll authorize that.
Chris Jurecki, Elba Island. Additionally, it was agreed that participation would be required from the above group mentioned, along the, along the township management and legal counsel, as well as the Township Insurance Representative, Jim Daly. Upon request, Mr. Bletcher agreed to take the lead in this, setting this meeting up, measuring, securing necessary township participation, documents, insurance policies needed to have a productive meeting. He advised the group that he was going on a long planned vacation, and the meeting needed to be scheduled within the next couple of weeks. Trustee Nelson pushed for a meeting ASAP and agreed to assist Liaison Bletcher. Everyone agreed to be as flexible as possible. The study session meeting never took place in the targeted period despite the fact that Police Commissioners and Township Insurance Provider, Jim Daly, made it very clear that they would be available during the weekend if needed to accommodate scheduling. An alternative meeting was targeted on July 30th, where another board trustee would sit in for the vacationing Bletcher, but Chief Warnick called me on July 23rd, advising me that he had been ordered by Dale Ream that he and his management team were not to attend unless Liaison Bletcher could make it. Bletcher had already agreed that he was okay with another trustee sitting in for him, and their participation was confirmed. The meeting was canceled by Police Commission Chairman Anderson. The August Police Commission meeting was postponed until August 20th to accommodate Liaison Bletcher's vacation schedule. It was very well-attended by citizens, six board members, and Township Manager Dale Ream. As one of the first orders of business, the commissioners present at the July 9th meeting were asked to approve meeting minutes. Mr. Zalasko and myself refused to do so, as we believe they represented an unacceptable level of transparency and detail to hold persons accountable for their commitment actions. Based on our decision, we then found ourselves in a receiving end of a lecture from Trustee O'Connor, on the importance of not having comprehensive meeting minutes even when meetings are not videoed. It was, I was told that government meeting minute-taking is different than that in the business world. Well, Trustee O'Connor was right, at least in part anyway, as all the requirements she mentioned are requirements mentioned in Chapter 67, Township Article 1, covering General Commission's Guidelines, Section 67-1, but failed to mention one little important phrase that preceded those requirements, and I quote, "As a minimum." I appreciate her offering to hold a class on this topic, but she has suggested that she has done in the past to teach other new commission members. But let me be clear, I'm not interested in your class, nor do I believe this, the vast majority of the citizens of this great community are. To the contrary, I believe we are looking for more transparency and accountability from our government officials. Although there was a lot said and asked at the August meeting, the overwhelming concerns were questions directed to Manager Ream regarding the reasons for the changes, actions he initiated that led to cancellation of the 19 deer call and current state of unpreparedness for the 2020 program. As per usual, they went unanswered. I'm confused, and I do think it's time for a new direction. I believe the board needs to hold Mr. Ream accountable, and us citizens of G.I. need to do a better job electing board members in 2020. I asked the Board of Trustees, when voting on Agenda Item Number Four, to do the right thing, not to advance your power and control, but simply the right thing for the citizens of Groseal. Please remember what you were taught by those people you respected and admired for their integrity when growing up, your mother, father, and/or grandparents.
Ms. Kostroff.
Catherine Kostroff, West River Road. I have two points to make. The first, I want to thank you both for your service. I hope it does not end here tonight. We were lucky to have you both, and hopefully that continues. As a township resident, I would like to say this is embarrassing to sit back here and watch this. I was not at the commission meeting, and you said it was a circus, but if it was anything like the five minutes that I watched in the beginning of this meeting, I can only imagine, because this is a circus, and all of you should be ashamed of the way you act. When residents come up here, I've watched three of you roll your eyes every single time. Why have public comment? Why have emails if you're not going to respond to them? If you don't want our opinion, don't ask for it. I'd like to remind you that you were voted and elected by the residents. Secondly, Ms. O'Connor, my father is Edward Kostroff, and I did just text him. City Lights, the charity that he is on the board of, and my mother, has approved the call for processing every single time. It is very false, and I'd like that rescinded, and he would like that rescinded at all, that any decision that was made, and Chief Warnick, I hope you can back up on that, that my dad did approve and had a place for the meat to go. So I would like that taken back, please, on his behalf. Again, thank you. I hope you do the right thing, because it sets a precedent that is actually scary, that if you question, what are we teaching our youth? Why would I or anybody else want to be on a commission and help this amazing community that we have, when if you question, or you don't agree with somebody else on the board, that you're gone? Checks and balances are what make great companies, great townships, great cities, and I hope that you can speak for the township and not for any personal agendas.
Let's, just, just to clarify, we have the minutes from the, which was the October?
Ms. Kostroff, I, I certainly was not putting, trying to put any kind of negative impact on your dad. I just know that when I was at the September 2018 Police Commission meeting, that Chief Porcelli- Porciarelli reported that at that time, uh, the charity could not take the meat and that this put things on hold because there would, could be up to three tons of meat and the, um, uh, Chief said that the Township would probably have to come up with about $7,000 to stay in the program. That was as of September and I'm just simply, I was just simply stating what one aspect might be why the call could not proceed as planned.
Is that in the minutes, O'Ton? Just asking, is that me?
It, it was not in the minutes.
Not in the minutes?
Whoa, 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 whoa. The minutes, the-
Because as Mr. Churecki pointed out-
The minutes said, the minutes said Chief Porciarelli reported a distribution problem.
Yes.
He didn't go into any further detail than that. That is captured in the minutes.
Comment on that?
And, and, and so that, the point was not to cast shade on Mr. Kostroff or the charity. It was simply to state the fact that in my opinion, there were, there were more than one reason why the deer call might have been put on hold.
I wanted to publicly, because that was your opinion, but I wanted to let you know that the Board members have never once said no to it and there was a point where all of the homeless, um, food bank where it was going, no longer was. There may have been a period that he wasn't sure where it was going to go to, but it was not, so that may have been misconstrued.
Correct.
But there, he had never said, no, we are not taking it. It was probably a, we're figuring out where we're gonna do it.
Right. It was, it was never-
I just think you're doing shade. I just wanted to point out there that I don't want anybody here or watching to think that one of the reasons was because they didn't do it because-
Because the Township would have found, the Township would certainly have found another way to cover those costs. Again, it was just to illustrate that there were more things going on that needed to be sorted before the call could be completed. It was certainly not to say that the charity or your dad, um, did not come through.
Hey, I heard the term waiver of liability a number of times. What is the waiver of liability? We had no, where does waiver of liability, and I'm asking the, the manager-
Want me to answer that, sir?
I'm asking, actually, I'm asking the Township Manager.
I don't think he's gonna answer.
So if I ask him to-
We have a volunteer service agreement that is required to be signed by the volunteers. Perhaps that's what's being referenced.
The Hold Harmless Agreement? That we ask of all volunteers?
I have a volunteer service-
So that's being referred to as a waiver of liability? And the, the Hold Harmless was what?
That's the same thing you're saying.
The documents that did not exist, is that correct?
That's exactly what it does. It waives their liability to all rights under workers' comp and insurance. Do you want me to answer again?
And that is what the volunteer service agreement includes.
Okay, and those were lacking. All right, we still have plenty of time for public comment. Officer Counts.
Good evening, Kevin Counts. I'm the President of the Grozeel Police Officers Association. Um, I'm looking at Action Item Number Four in a different light than most people are here. I'm looking at it from a union standpoint. Unlike most communities, we have an actual meaningful grievance process when there's a disagreement between the Township and the police union. Most communities pretty much go directly to arbitration. Arbitration costs the taxpayers thousands of dollars every time it's opened up. Um, we've had it for decades now, have used the Police Commission as a hearing body for our grievances. From what I've seen at Commission meetings, and I don't know all the ins and outs of what's going on between the Board members or Liaison and these gentlemen, I haven't seen anything personally that I feel warrants removal of these individuals, and it concerns me that in the significant grievance that we've had, these are the two individuals on the Commission currently that voted in the Union's favor. Unless I hear something during this meeting that justifies to me as union leadership that this is a removal based on merit, although the Township is not obligated to do that, you do have the right to do what you're doing. I'm not here to dispute that. There are ramifications though, however, if you do go forward with it, and I haven't heard something at least to convince me that there is a reason outside of their decision during a grievance process, like I said, the call's been brought up quite a bit, but I know the first inklings I've heard of their removal, or at least Mr. Zalasko's removal, was after the vote in favor of the Union after grievance. I'm looking for anything from this Board that justifies their removal beyond that. Also, we have decades of procedure, of past practice of appointing new members to the Commissions. From what I've heard so far, and I haven't heard all the specifics yet, and in your discussion, I assume you'll get to it, the appointment of two new members, and there's no question in the integrity of the members or their worthiness to serve, it's just the method by which it's being accomplished, you're varying from at least 30 years that I'm aware of a past practice. And to me, that undermines the grievance procedure set forth in our contract. If that is what occurs here tonight, every grievance we have going forward will go right to arbitration. We will not be heard before this Commission, because that Commission decision can be used to influence arbitration. So every grievance we have will cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars when right now it's costing nothing. So I would just like the Board to really consider all the ramifications of your decision before you go forth. And if, after this meeting, I will not be responding again, public comment will be closed, but I will respond on the Grozeel Civics Issue Facebook page tomorrow or Wednesday at the latest to give the Union's standpoint of what occurs here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Counts. I'm here all night. All right, I see no bar, uh, Mr. Longton.
Commissioner Longton. Morning, everybody. Good morning, sorry. It's been a long day.
We have been here a long time.
Long day. We're gonna be here till morning. Scott Longton, Grozeel Police Commission. I only have a couple of things that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. One, from the Union's standpoint, there are some concerns, and everybody knows that I'm an attorney, there's concerns that this could cost our Township a lot of money. The other thing is, is that with our Commissioners that you want to remove, I hope that this Board is not removing them because of personality conflicts, because these two men truly do love our community, just as everybody up here loves our community and everybody in this room. But what I've seen, and as you're aware, I've been on the Commission for a very short time, and I was brought in because of my background as a mediator. I'm a, I've been on the plaintiff's side, the defense side, and I've been in the middle as a mediator. And that was one thing that everybody kept saying is that they brought me in as a mediator. And I've been told numerous times that it's refreshing to have me on the Police Commission. And what I've seen in the short time that I've been there are some personality conflicts that really can be settled. And at the end of the day, I hope this Board for Action Item Four will table it, let some people have some meetings with each other, bring the dust down from whatever happened in the past. And I don't have a, a, a stick in this fight because that was before me. I don't care what happened in the past. What I care about is this community moving forward and what's best for this community. And people have not just put their fists down. People are still arguing with each other, fighting over stuff, and in all reality, at the end of the day, a lot of it looks to be just personality conflicts that can be set aside so that the Township can move forward. What I ask the Board tonight is to table this, move it out, let me work with the Commission and the Board, because I think I have that ability that hasn't occurred yet, and let me try to bring some peace between the Commission and where the Police Department is headed and the Board, and move this community forward and let everything in the past water under the bridge. And I think that's perfect for this island because we have a lot of bridges around here. But at the end of the day, I ask you to vote it no or to push it out and have this further discussions after we've had some roundtable meetings per se, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longton. Mr. Longton.
Mr. Longton.
Mr. Longton.
Mr. Longton, I have a question. I appreciate you coming up and saying what you did. Do you really think, after all this animosity, do you really think that these sides can come back together? Our, our main concern, my main concern, is that the Chief and Deputy Chief and, and their team, their management team can keep the Police Department moving forward without being micromanaged or second-guessed. And I respect Mr. Zalasko for his service. I know he's brought a lot to the Township over the years. I don't know Mr. Churecki that well, and after the comments he made tonight, I'm not sure that I should say anything more, but do you really think, after what they talked about, the Board and the Commission liaison, do you really think that you can bring those sides back together?
Hmm, I think I can because here's why. A lot of my cases are a lot of divorces. I've seen the worst in the worst of people. You, you see, you see good people at their absolute worst. You absolutely do. And, and, and that it's, when you're in a divorce with those types of cases, it's horrendous. You're, you're fighting over kids and custody and parenting time and, and who gets the 401K and, and pensions and, you know, who's gonna live in the house and who's moving out of the house? This relationship here, this is easy compared to that. So honestly, yes, I think I can. Is it gonna happen overnight? No. Give me three months. Set this out for three months from now. That's what I'm asking you to do. Give me some time. Let me meet with people. Let me talk with everybody. You know, let's have some, some actual meetings of everybody to sit down to, to figure out, because I think there's a lot more here of, of, um, miscommunication that hasn't happened. There, there's a lot of miscommunication and understanding and a lot of conclusions, jumping to conclusions on both sides. There's a lot of just, and, and I think that's natural because people just tend to think the worst in these situations, when in all reality, as a middle person and me looking at both sides, it's not as bad as it really looks. It's, it's the escalation in our own minds that is making it worse than it really is. And that's why I say, give me three months. And I, I've had cases that never should have settled and they should have gone to trial. I don't think this is the case. I think this is salvageable because I think we do have a good Commission, a, a good group of five of us, and, and I think that we will be able to do things that will be helpful.
Again, you, 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 you use the metaphor of the divorce, and in this case, we have a transition, right? We went from one Chief and a management style and team to another Chief and, and that's always complicated, just like when Boards change, you know, when, um, when we get new officials. Well, I, I'm not debating, but as you know, Brian, you and I didn't always get along either, right? So, um, I really do, I don't know where the rest of the Board will take this, but I for one appreciate your offer and, and hope that we can maybe pursue that path.
Thank you. And just so the, the Board understands, me and Commissioners Zalasko, there are things that me and him will not agree on, and, and there are things that I won't agree with Mr. Anderson on, but I have the ability, because there's no hard feelings, we just have discussions. And I know that has happened in the past, but there have been hard feelings now, and, I think I have the ability to move this between the Board and the Commission forward. We just need to have a sit-down of how to work that out.
Three months, you say?
Three months. Because here's the problem. The problem is, is because of every, with the amount of people that I need to meet with and talk with and scheduling, that's why I asked for three months. That's it. Anything else?
That would, that would strictly be between the Board and the Commission and, and the team.
Yes.
Not outsiders, just-
No, no else. There's, there, we don't need outsiders.
We have not heard from the Liaison yet. Can we put Mr. Bletcher?
I'd like, I'd like to, uh, just make a statement to Commissioner Longton. May I call you Scott?
Of course.
I want to thank you for being the voice of reason in all this. I am not necessarily proud of, of my actions. I only wish that I had sought you out sooner and gotten, and received your, uh, guidance on this. But if I never, if I never see you again, I will walk away from this meeting tonight with the greatest respect for you that I, one person could have for another. And I want to thank you for what you've, what you've done, the stack, you know, for standing up, making a statement. I hope that we can all come, put this off for, for at least three months to give you the ability to negotiate this and put it straight. So I, I just, again, I want to thank you very much and, uh, I, like I told you, I will hold you in, in deep regards, uh-
Thank you.
Forever.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Any reason we can't take that under consideration right now?
Well, we don't, we don't, we, we don't have a motion yet, but we have, we do have a pending motion that's on the agenda. That's not on the agenda. So let's introduce the motion. Unless somebody else wants to speak, Mr. O'Connor.
And by the way, who, who came up with the idea of raising this? This is-
This is a great idea.
No, I believe that was Mr. Zalasko.
Because tall people like me, we're always like, you know, way down here, so appreciate that. Tim O'Connor Island Boulevard. Um, I've been sitting quiet and I wasn't sure I was gonna say anything, but the last two speakers, uh, kind of put that out. So first of all, Mr. Longton, is it?
Yes.
Um, good idea. Number one. Speaker over here earlier said, "The two gentlemen that were supposed to be appointed are both quality candidates and perhaps the Board might consider increasing the Commission to seven. Maybe that's something that's not a bad idea." Right? Okay? Nodding heads all around, okay? Okay. There has been, uh, several comments about records and minutes and the difference between business and government. I would posit that going forward, every single Commission in this Township, Rec, Fire, Police, every Commission shows up in this Board on television every time, no exceptions. That way, there's no doubt about who says, any Township resident can go to the website, click a button, and see what happened in this room on a certain date years ago. And then it's clear, whatever the minutes officially say, the record is the record. So you'll be able to see that. So I don't know what the mechanism is that's gonna be needed for that. Perhaps the Board might take that up. I am totally baffled by the whole idea of in-kind compensation. That's just worrisome to me. I'm not saying it's wrong. I'm just saying, show me the documents. Don't show them to me, show them to the proper folks. Officer Counts, you said something that disturbs me, that if the Board goes through with this, every grievance is now gonna go strict to arbitration and cost the Township thousands of dollars. I'm troubled by that.
Me too.
So, but, that, that's, well, no, hear me out. That's an either-or card that should never be played, and you played it.
Well, sir, I run the Union, you go ahead and make your comment.
No, no, I'm, it's, it's okay. I just, it worries me that, okay? Is the deer call gonna happen? Yes or no?
Yes.
It is. When is it gonna happen?
January 1st.
Who's gonna be doing it?
We are.
The police officers?
Yes, as of right now.
Are all the rules and insurances and waivers and liability, whatever is gonna be needed, in place?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Any other public comment? All right, I see none. Mr. Bletcher.
Supervisor, regarding Number Four. I propose a motion to remove Robert Zalasko and Michael Churecki from the Grozeel Township Police Commission effective immediately, that is September 9, 2019, and furthermore, to appoint Eric Ranka to the Police Commission effective October 8, 2019, until March 31, 2022, and to appoint Jerry Madioli to the Police Commission effective October 8, 2019, until March 31, 2020.
So, Mr. Bletcher?
Thank you. The history and purpose and explanation of this is all Commissions are subject to Chapter 67 of Grozeel Township Code, a controlling ordinance. Under certain circumstances, the Township Board must exercise its authority to ensure- Under certain circumstances, the township board must exercise its authority to ensure all commissions are contributing to the best interests of the township. All commissioners serve at the pleasure of the board. At this point, the board has the opportunity to appoint commissioners who will further the township's goals and objectives. Couple of things I would like to add to that, Mr. Supervisor. Number one, there's a question about tonight whether or not these officers, these volunteers, former officers, were paid compensation. Two points on that need to be considered. There is a huge difference between compensation and reimbursement. You earn compensation. You're reimbursed for expenses that you have incurred as a result of your volunteer endeavors. Compensation versus recommending, or compensation versus reimbursement. Know the difference between the two. A second thing on this article, on this question, on this issue, has been answered by the township's insurance carrier. From Connie Jo. C. at Meadowbrook Insurance to Brent M. Harden, Grozeal Police Department, subject independent contractors. This is dated August 1, 2019. Mr. Harden, Section 161 of the Michigan Workers' Compensation Statute provides a definition of an employee for purposes of determining eligibility for benefits under the statute. In discussing your particular situation with multiple people from Grozeal Township, it was my understanding from each caller that the volunteers involved in the deer-culling program are paid individuals. Based upon that information, I consistently indicated that IRS 20 factor test that he used determined whether an injured person is a volunteer or recovered employee requires us to review the basic tenets of the IRS rule. The things we look for are, one, whether the person is paid. Didn't say recompensed or any kind of payment of expenses, but whether they are paid. Two, whether the employer directs and work three hours. Four, length of the employment. Five, ability of the employer to discharge, terminate the employee. And six, whether the equipment is supplied by the employer. My response to these independent requests for coverage information was an affirming yes, there is workers' compensation coverage. Based upon the information received, I indicated that workers' compensation benefits would be available if injuries were sustained. I made it clear that each claim would need to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. In the event deviations from the employment, horseplay, or other circumstances would preclude coverage. You indicate that these volunteers are unpaid. If that is the case, and since payment of some type of compensation is the overriding factor used in determining whether an injured person is a volunteer or an employee under the workers' comp statute, I came to the conclusion that these volunteers are not going to be covered under your workers' compensation policy. Her conclusion was simple: paid, covered; unpaid, not covered. Workers' compensation is not an issue. Now, there has been a significant amount of discussion tonight about one issue: deer culling. And the deer culling supposedly was a failure because of a failure in management, a failure by Mr. Ream, and a failure by myself. Let me correct the record. That is not the reason why we are here tonight. It is fairness and judgment. Fairness in the decision-making process and judgment. You understand that Article 1 General Commission Guidelines indicates that each township commission is a part of the administration of the township, not an independent agency. In making decisions, commissions have only those powers and authorities delegated to them by the board. A commission shall make its decisions within such authority granted to it by the township board. Commission members serve at the pleasure of the township board and may be removed at any time by majority action of the township board, except as otherwise provided by law. Township policy further dictates that the township board seriously consider the removal from office of any commission member who has knowingly and willfully violated township policies, or has knowingly and willingly engaged in any act or conduct which has a detrimental effect on the successful functioning of the commission of which he is a member, or who cannot in cooperation with the township board and its general policy guidelines. I submit to you that the following actions meet those tests. Number one, May 2017, there was a retiree healthcare grievance. Labor presented its case. It was argued that because the matter addressed wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment, it was not within the power of the commission to decide, and that is backed up by township ordinance. It was also argued that the township manager was necessary to present management's facts and arguments. As he was in Atlanta and unavailable, it was requested by me that the hearing be continued when he returned. The decision that the commission made, including the two members here tonight, was that they had a right to hear the matter, that the manager should have been present, and that the grievance was granted. In my opinion, it was unfair to deny the township and its manager the right to be heard under contravailing circumstances and facts. It was bad judgment to make a decision on benefits that were outside of the police commission's authority. The decision was subsequently overturned by the Wayne County Circuit Court. Ms. O'Connor, if I'm correct, litigation now has caused the township in excess of $100,000. Number two. The August 2018 township's manager's decision to transfer a police department employee to the Department of Public Services. The township manager determined to transfer an employee from the police department to the DPS to eliminate a friction point within the police department. It was stated that the transferred employee, quote, "should have been fired," end of quote, although no formal proceedings were presented. The commissioner, in the initial, it is the commission that is the initial panel that recommends discharge or a lesser punishment to the township board, and can only do so after a full hearing. In my opinion, it was bad judgment to prejudge a matter without having all of the facts presented by management, and a rebuttal by the union, including you, Mr. Counts, and the officers that you represent. I considered it to be unfair to the employee to decide the matter without having the benefit of a full hearing. August, September of 2018 promotions to management. Deputy Chief Robert Bowes, present here tonight, retired effective June 30, leaving a vacancy in his position. Chief Porcelle was retiring effective December 31, 2018. Three members of the department applied for promotions. One member, in conversations with Manager Ream, interpreted the labor agreement so as to allow him, at his discretion, to return to the bargaining unit if he so desired. Manager Ream polled a majority of the board, found four members would not promote him with that interpretation. The individual spoke with at least one board member in the board member's office who confirmed the majority would not make that promotion. The proposed promotion, promotion was withdrawn in a board meeting by me with the approval of a majority of township board to spare that individual the embarrassment of being turned down. I have known that officer for 25 years, and God, I would do the same thing again for him, and I would do it for anybody else in the department. Lieutenant Warnock, who was next in management line after Chief Porcelle, and Deputy Chief Bowes nominated as chief, with Brent Harden as deputy chief and Ken Pellin as lieutenant. The liaison noted there was 100 days to fill the vacancies and train the new management team before December 31, and that Rome was burning. Commissioners appeared before the township board and blistered the process because their selection was not being promoted to be the next chief. It is my opinion that it was bad judgment to fail to recognize the decision to promote was a board decision, not a commission decision. It is my opinion it was bad judgment to fail to accept that a majority of the township board would not approve the recommendation. And it was unfair to demand their recommendation be followed when a majority of the township board decided otherwise. November 19... November 2019.
Mr. Bledsoe, please be silent.
Please be silent, Mr. Jurecki. Mr. Bledsoe.
November 2019, recommendation for a new commissioner. Commissioner Dixon resigned from the commission due to family commitments. Commissioners decided to interview Apiclinz in December, coinciding with the liaison's vacation and inability to participate. One stated reason was that Rome was burning, and we needed to fill the vacancy as soon as possible. The recommendation was not provided to the liaison until the second week of January. Liaison was advised when the recommendation for the new commissioner was their third choice, but the first two were too controversial, and they were, quote, "extending an olive branch to the board." It is my opinion unfair and bad judgment to freeze out the Commissioner Liaison out of the process. It was bad judgment to extend, quote, "an olive branch" from volunteers to the board they work for. And as far as I'm concerned, the term "extend an olive branch" is a tacit recognition that conduct and decision-making was wrong. Regarding the deer-culling program. Deer-culling program began 11 years ago with volunteers, including two retired Grozeal officers. The township manager required then and now that volunteers sign waivers agreements regarding liability, which we all understand are voluntary service agreements. Chief Warnock, exercising his due diligence, discovered the culling file was empty, and those documents were not in the file. Chief Warnock, as I understand it, contacted township manager Ream and advised him of the problem. Manager Ream determined, working with Chief Warnock, to suspend the program until the proper releases and documentation were located. The township insurance carrier insisted on releases that were eventually drafted after a period of months and in conjunction with the township attorney. Commissioners determined, without invitation from the police chief or township manager, to become involved with the so-called insurance issues and, quote, "do a deep dive into Grozeal Township's insurance coverage." In July 27, 2019, two, two hours before I was leaving for vacation, I received the following email from one of these commissioners. "Good morning, all. It is my understanding that based from the culling program has operated in the past that our callers have been covered both liability and workers' compensation insurance. Moreover, it is also my understanding that township management has been fully aware of this. Carl, as the liaison, I ask, in preparation for our upcoming meeting, you ensure that the police commission have full transparency to all police or equivalent... or equivalent insurances and material changes that would other callers, um, coverage in the next three years that we positioned to..." terrible bright light up here. "...to recommend that what is best for our beloved community as we work to construct future programs. I can't be... if you can't be this month, if you can't be..."
It's tiny print.
It is very tiny. "...coverage in the last three years so that we are positioned to do recommend what is best to our beloved community as we work to construct, develop our future culling program." If you can't do this, notwithstanding the six months you've been working on it for the police commission, then I ask that you request another board member to do this on your behalf, or arrange to give me access to the providers, and I will do it. I would point out, it is not the job of the commission to become involved in township insurances. It's a false statement to claim that the liaison had been working on the matter for six months when it was being addressed by the carrier, the chief, and the township manager. The carrier was ultimately advised to speak only with the deputy chief or township manager as the callers were providing incorrect information. The carrier provided the email confirming there was no compensation for the callers in a two-and-a-half-page memo regarding workers' compensation that I just read. The township manager called the carrier to apologize to the representative for the calls and the conduct. All insurance issues were resolved by the chief and deputy chief, and they have determined to use current police officers to do the culling. Regarding the August 27, 2019 commission meeting, again, six of us were present, including Township Loftus, Supervisor Loftus, Clerk O'Connor, Trustees Budney, Melvesto, Nelson, and myself. It began with one of the commissioners objecting to the minutes of the July 2019 commission meeting. Minutes were taken by Scott Longton and formatted by the Administrative Secretary, a 20-year employee. The commissioner savaged those responsible for taking and presenting the minutes in a 15-minute harangue, arguing with Clerk O'Connor what should be in the minutes and how they should be presented. And she is the expert on Grozeal applying statute law as to what they require. It didn't matter. That was followed up by criticizing management for the lack of progress on the matter that had all been, already been resolved, that is, the deer culling. It ended with one mother who was present with her daughter describing the meeting as one of the most impress, unprofessional she had ever seen. Several officers indicated afterwards that it was the most embarrassing moment in their law enforcement career. It is unfair to attack another commissioner over their note-taking. It is unfair to attack the minutes when an employee was doing her job. And it is bad judgment to do the same during a public meeting when they have the facts or should know the facts. On a personal note, I have served on the DPS Commission, the Police Commission, Greenways Open Space Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. I have spent 34 years on commissions with nine township boards. I have worked with liaisons Sally Grostick, Augie Nash, Leroy Wojewodzik, Kurt Kobelek, and Eric Ranka, all without an issue. I have worked with three township managers, Paul Johnson, Dave Makarsky, and presently Dale Ream, again, without issues. I have worked with six supervisors, Jim Cowan, Bruce Sells, George Honer, Doug Jones, Kurt Kobelek, and the current supervisor. I have worked with 30-plus commissioners, past and present. And when I have a chief of police come to me, tell me he feels like they are being treated like a dog by members of the commission, three times, not once, not twice, but being treated like a dog, it is time for something to change. We can do better. We can exercise fairness and better judgment-making, and I'm asking that this township board support and pass the motion I have made. And I ask that that be done tonight in a roll-call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Bledsoe. Other comments? Mr. Budney?
Well, I, I do agree with Carl as far as the roll-call vote. I think that's very important here. But quite frankly, uh, you had a laundry list of things, of reasons why these, these gentlemen should be taken off, but you failed to give us any of it prior to this meeting so that we could check out and verify the accuracy of any of it. You sit there and you, you literally bloviate for a number of minutes, and I still don't see that they've done anything wrong. Just because you say they've done something wrong doesn't make it wrong. I was at that meeting. They did absolutely nothing wrong. They were forceful in wanting an answer. That's all they did, is want an answer. They were not disrespectful. They didn't, they never, uh, they didn't, it didn't hurt the meeting at all. Uh, they didn't disrupt anything, but they were requesting an answer. The fact that it appears, Carl, from your, your little speech here, that you obviously have a problem with them, and it makes me even more want to do what, uh, what Scott Langton, Longton, I'm sorry, uh, uh, you know, requested to do. I think that's what's needed here. It would have an absolutely terrible effect on this community if we go through, if this goes through and is voted, uh, to remove them. So I would, I would ask that, uh, that we vote this down or table it and, and move to, uh, have Mr. Longton come in and work with the people. That's the obvious thing here, is that there is this, this, uh, distrust or, or dislike of the people involved, and that can be overcome. That can be overcome if anybody would just sit down, take a deep breath, and really start looking at what's making each, each group mad. Uh, getting rid of them because they, they basically take a position different from what you like is not a reason to get rid of them. For you to say in your, in your history, uh, that at this point, the board has the opportunity to appoint commissioners who will further township goals... township goals and objectives, when that's never been discussed with the township, it doesn't sound like it's the township goals and objectives. It sounds like it's your goals and objectives. And if we're going to put two people on who you've handpicked, it sounds like they're going to be your puppets.
I don't think anybody's going to say or even claim that Eric Ranka is anybody's puppet. He has served before, eight years on that police commission. He has been with the township on the board capacity for eight years. And I believe he was the clerk at one point, Ms. O'Connor, if I'm correct, for four years. I don't believe Eric Ranka is anybody's puppet. He certainly isn't mine. I have not had the regular contact with him, as you would expect between a puppet master and a puppet. And frankly, I met Jerry Mattioli and understand that he has 77 years of police experience. And Mr. Mattioli indicated that with his background, and he provided that to Mr. Anderson, Chairman Anderson, indicating what he had in terms of a background, what he had to offer. And the question came up, Mr. Mattioli, you're not being hired to be an investigator and you're not being hired to do any kind of surveillance. You're being hired to work on a police commission with a chief. Can you get along with the chief? If it's a third-grade playground, can you stay in the sandbox and not kick sand in everybody's eyes? And his answer was yes. And I will tell you, what I saw at that meeting was greatly different than what you had. And if you want to have an opportunity to review it, maybe there is a way to do that, hopefully not on YouTube, but something else that would allow Mr. Snyder to go ahead and provide that as a copy if he is willing to do on his private property. He taped it, he videoed it, he asked me beforehand, and I'm asking, I asked him not to do it. I thought it would set a terrible precedent. But he contacted the township clerk, he contacted others, as I understand, on the board from what he told me, and said, yeah, I want to do that. And if you want to look at an hour and a half history of a meeting that was just seriously dysfunctional, ask Mr. Snyder for a copy.
Well, Carl, are you saying that it was those two gentlemen that did all that? Or are you saying the meeting in general? Because there were a lot of people talking.
There were a lot of people talking and I saw the exchange with the township clerk and I saw what was going on with the chief of police and the deputy chief, and that was unacceptable. Six of us were there, let the question be called.
Are you calling the question?
I'm calling the question.
Mr. Supervisor.
I support the call.
Mr. Supervisor.
Do you support the call? Madam Clerk, support the call. I'll support the call, Mr. Treasurer.
I just want to hear what they got to say.
Well, we have four, so.
There we go.
We have four on the call. The question is called.
Oh, so we don't even get to vote?
The question is called.
No.
You get to vote, but.
No, you've got your four votes. We don't, our vote doesn't count.
Okay. With that, with the question being called, the motion to remove Robert Zalasko, Michael Drecky from the Groseal Township Police Commission effective immediately September 9, 2019, and further to appoint Eric Ranka to the Police Commission effective October 8, 2019 until March 31, 2022, and to appoint Jerry Mattioli to the Police Commission effective October 8, 2019 until March 31, 2020. I'll ask for a roll call vote. And as I've done twice already this evening, Mr. Bledcher?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Clerk O'Connor?
Aye.
Supervisor, aye. Mr. Treasurer?
Aye.
Mr. Budney?
Nay.
And Mr. Melvesto?
Nay.
Motion carries.
You are an embarrassment.
Okay, if you want to, those of you who are very disappointed, if you wish to vacate, madam, please. We'll have some level of decorum here, we still have a meeting to conduct. Okay, that concludes tonight's action items. If anybody still cares, Madam Clerk.
I would just like to say as people are leaving and maybe help clear the room, that although Mr. Longton's sentiment was much appreciated, after hearing the jeers and cheers from this side of the room and some of the back rows, I don't think even he could fix this. And so it's time to move forward. That's it for the clerk's report.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Treasurer?
I have the investment report for the month of July. Shows 11,907,709 invested in various accounts. These accounts can be viewed on my website. It generated 15,993, which was 1.44%. And it reminded me that probably six years ago, that amount was 1,500, so it's getting somewhat better. The 2019 summer tax bills are due next Monday, September 16, 2019. Payment will be taken here at the township without late penalties until 5:00 PM. Mail post marked with that date will be accepted in a timely fashion. Beginning September 17, 1% penalty will be added per calendar month. Deferments for the extension of the due date are also required to be filed by September 16, 2019. Approved deferments for these who qualify will extend the December 16 due date until February 14, 2020. As of today, we've collected 21% of the 2019 summer tax rolls distribution to school and county have been paid in a timely fashion, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We'll move on to trustee reports. Mr. Budney?
DPS meeting tomorrow, 7 o'clock in this room. And as usual, no ZBA meeting. Actually, I guess I should say no ZBA meeting for once. We've had quite a few. The only thing I want to say is I truly believe what's happened here tonight with that last action item is a terrible disappointment for this community. This community is the one that's going to suffer from that. I know there's people here that, on this board, that think they won something tonight. They didn't. They hurt the community. It's, I'm totally frustrated by seeing something like this happen and being part of a board, which I am, I'm part of a board, and it's this board that did that. And that's sad. That's sad for this community. And I hope the people who saw that, who were here today, remember it and who did what.
Thank you, Mr. Budney.
A lot of emotion tied up here tonight. I meant exactly what I said to Police Commission member Scott Longton. He was the real, the only voice of reason in this room tonight. In some ways, a statement was made, this had nothing to do with the deer culling. Much of which was shared by Trustee Bledcher was not germane to the item that was before us. As a member of this board, I was denied to ask questions or make a statement in regard to this because Mr. Bledcher found it convenient to simply call the vote. What you've seen here is a board of five people. It is not a board of seven. All it takes, by Mr. Loftus's own words, we have four votes. That's all we need. This is your government in action. Please remember it. Mr. Longton, I apologize. I wish we, this board, had taken the opportunity to listen to you and use you as a voice of reason and to delay this action for a while. Unfortunately, the voice of reason just didn't reach out far enough. I apologize to you.
I'm sure other things happen with the fire department. Chief, do you have any? Okay. My guy's the best. Mr. Nelson?
What I would like to say is, chief, I apologize. And again, I'm letting my emotions overwhelm me. There is a golf outing coming up, correct? And are there still available tee times? And what's the best way to contact you or Fire Marshal Bowdre? Call you guys? Okay. And even if you just want to take part of the dinner, you're welcome to do that. If you would just like to make a cash donation, you're more than welcome to do that, too. That can all be handled at the fire department. And chief, I apologize, but I hope the golf outing turns out well for you. Thank you.
Okay, with that, Mr. Nelson?
No report tonight.
Mr. Bledcher?
I'd like to reserve my report for next month's meeting.
Very good. That'll move on to Mr. Assorti.
Mr. Supervisors and members of the board, I know we've been here late tonight. I just do want to go over something quickly because we have been approached by several members of the community about what's going on. And I think a little bit about what's going on with the vaping law, with our current governor and what's been put in place. So the ban that the governor put in place with the Department of Health and Human Services relates to the sale of flavored vaping products. If you don't know about this or don't understand the ease cigarettes and vaping process, please look it up. Please spend some time looking into where this is going. And I'm sure if not, Lieutenant Pellon will help you get some additional information. So I just want to give the board a little bit of background that you know, that with that, and this all started with, originally there was a report, and I just confirmed with Lieutenant Pellon tonight, that between 2017 and 2018, the use of vaping products by seniors in high school doubled. And it caught the attention of a lot of people, a lot of people. So in January of this year, there was a House Bill 4017 that started off with control of vaping and to try to treat it as much as possible as we do tobacco products. That kind of fell due to usual, you know, political and legislative type of things, but some additional things. So Senate Bill 106 and 155 did come out of that. That was put into place as a public act that was signed into effect by the governor in 2000, or excuse me, in June, with some of the impact being immediate effect and some taking place after 90 days, which was back on September 2nd or 30th. Forgive me for, we just passed that date. So I think that that's some background understanding where this is coming from. I just want everyone to know that Lieutenant Pellon did get ahold of me in late May. There was some concern that we wanted to go forward with our own ordinance here dealing with this. He and I have talked about the concerns we have about the state law and the limitations on what it is. There is currently a limitation. If you're under the age of 18, you obviously can't purchase it, just like tobacco products. You can't have it in your possession. It also prohibits individuals from selling to minors, just like you would tobacco products. We believe, meaning Lieutenant Pellon, and I believe the whole police department, and I believe, that we can handle some of those things here on our own within the township. Not that we can necessarily do it better than the state, but we may have some more information and certainly go through the process here in our local court through me, through the township. So we are working on an ordinance. I've had several drafts. I participate, and I know Lieutenant Pellon has kept up on this as well. I participate almost on a weekly basis on conference calls that are going about where the law currently stands, what might happen, what might not. My goal at this point is to make sure we get it right. And I'm ready to bring, I'll be ready to bring it to you when I'm confident we have it right. There's already some discussion about constitutional challenges to the current law that we'll put into place and what impact that may have and some other things. That doesn't directly impact what we want to address, which is use of this product by individuals, by minors at the school and others at the school. So if anybody has any questions on where we are, please, my whole goal tonight was to make sure if you don't know about it, if you don't know about the dangers, if you don't know about the reports that have been coming out about the dangers associated, please look into it. And we should have something to you real soon.
Mr. Assorti, if I may ask a quick question. Lara, licensing regulation agents just came out with a number of updates on the marijuana. Can you tell us, are we okay with that? Do we need to revisit the issue?
Correct. So in fact, Deputy Clerk Freel and I spoke tonight that we are past the time period of our publication. We'll put the state on notice that we have opted out of that provision for, not for medical marijuana, just for recreational marijuana. And until we find out something further, these are the initial set of the rules. They still have to go further with those rules. I'm sure they'll be challenged at several levels. And as indicated previously, not that I'm promoting one way or the other, but certainly we can see what kind of plays out before the township makes any decision about recreational use of marijuana. And we, you know, there was no requirement previously on the medical marijuana, and I think everybody knows where we stand in that.
I do have a question about the marijuana because Treasurer Vanoss at one point brought up that it is still against federal law.
That's correct.
How do you balance that in a state that has voted to make something legal, but it's against federal law? How does the township handle, how will we handle that situation in a legal way?
Well, in my opinion, we, I don't see that there's any, you know, unbelievable demand on the township right now to have facilities available. I think, you know, the more and more you read about this, there may be a time against what I personally believe and maybe what you personally believe about the use. But there may or may not be the right time. Right now is not the right time. I don't believe that we know enough, and I think that that's what the board previously made a decision on. We just don't, and the rules aren't even finalized yet about how you can have. So there's obviously some discussion about federal rules being changed. And I think, you know, this community, the best situation is sit tight and wait and see what's appropriate at the time.
Anything else for the attorney, for Mr. Assorti? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Assorti. Township manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and apologize for my cold. Just a couple of brief items. Our next meeting is September 23. And mark your calendars. On behalf of DDA Director and the Rec Department, Paint the Town Red is coming up on October 4th and 5th. And Friday, there'll be the parade at 4:30. And the Class of 2020 will have a tailgate fundraiser at the 5th Third Bank property. And Saturday will be the Vendor Community Group Marketplace at 10 to 5. There'll be music, entertainment at Lyons Park and the old 5th Third Bank property. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ream. I'll pick up from there on a DDA report. That is homecoming weekend. Groseal plays Flat Rock, 7:00 PM. And Dale gave you the rest of the particulars for the homecoming weekend and what Angela's planned for Paint the Town Red. Additionally, let's see, Angela and I met with State Senator Stephanie Chang. She had a Michigan Downtown Association promoting, you know, getting the legislators out to the communities. So we met with her on Macomb Street. They did a Facebook Live presentation of the Commons. Angela gave her a tour of our downtown. They had ice cream at Tasty Freeze, and I'm going to convince her to move her family here. And then probably get redistricted, so all in vain. Okay, so outside of the DDA, and this was a little bit baffling, I received several complaints about road repairs in the residential areas. And it sounded like they either didn't want their streets repaired, they didn't like the fact that the repair was going on. Again, it had me baffled, or they should spend the money somewhere else. These are, this is part of our intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County. We had $250,000 from the county to spend on repairs to residential roads. Again, I'm a little bit baffled, but the road millage, we have our road maintenance millages, allows us to come up with a matching fund so that we can take advantage of these partnerships with the county and get, at least starting on the residential roads, get some of those fixed. So hopefully this will carry on. We got recognized as the safest city again. This makes, what, 10 out of the last 12 years, safest city. But this one, every year it's a different organization. This is backgroundchecks.org. Never heard of them before? Did a little work. If you want to run a background check on anybody, though, they say they'll do it for free up to a point, and then they'll charge you after that. But they But they ran by the, the crime statistics and number of police officers on the force. They have some rubric to give us a score. But, but we were number one in the state, and Trenton was number 10, our nearest competitor. So again, Chief, tell the guys, keep it a good work. And Chief Porcelle, too. You got a lot, a lot of those, lots while, while, while you were the chief. I want to say again what I said earlier, commend the Public Service Commission. They've been very busy on the waste hauling, the waste hauling contract. They've got another contract to keep the wastewater treatment plant running. Just, and, and they're still working on trying to get money for, to get roads fixed. So again, very busy. Thanks, guys. And the announcements, grading dust control, speaking of which, grading and dust control on thoroughfare starting, well, Tuesday through Thursday. Grading and dust control thoroughfare between church and horse mill. Please don't park on the road. We'll get this out in a push notification. Additionally, hydrant flushing starts tomorrow. We'll get a push notification out on this, too. And they'll give you all the things to worry about when we start putting pressure into the, into the water system. County Bridge closed for inspection, again, on the 27th of September from 9 until 3. Again, if, if they open it earlier than 3 o'clock, we'll get the information out. But it's that day and that day only. There's rumors flying around that an extended closure is beginning. I have no timeframe at this, at this moment, I have no timeframe for an extended closure of the Wayne County Bridge. We meet with the county for more bridge updates on the 20th. And hopefully we'll get some kind of a construction schedule. Let's see, when we find out when the, when the plan to close it for the major constructions. We've already begun working with Riverview. We met with, let's see, manager, Chief, Chief Warnock. Deputy Chief Harden and I met with Andy Swift, Mayor Riverview, their, golly, I can't remember his name. Their, their chief and their administrator, and we saw Bobbo there also. Cliff Rose, yeah, Cliff Rosebaum is chief, and then Doug Dyers. Oh, thanks, Bob. Just, just, I remember their faces. Anyway, worked out some tentative plans for, for traffic control on the west side of the bridge. We'll handle traffic control on our side. We had, like I said, some tentative agreements. We're going to try to petition to get maybe some Wayne County reserves in it, just so that there are a couple of times a day when it just gets bogged and it, we need, I think we need a man on the scene to, to, to move traffic expeditiously. Otherwise, the light does a pretty good job when people adjust to the fact that they're going to have to take the toll bridge. Commissioner Palmar pushed to have the full commission approve the engineering contract for the West River Road overpass. Rather than taking two or three months, he, he did everything he could. He got it rammed through pretty quickly. So the engineering contract has been approved. That will expedite eventually getting a contractor and getting that fixed when the swing bridge is, is being repaired. Okay, those of you worried about the railroads, I meet again with Debbie Dingell on railroad issues next week. It's, it's, it's just frustrating. You know, every, everybody wants a great separation, and nobody's going to get one. We want some control of the railroads. We're probably not going to get it. I don't know how you inspire Congress to give some of the authority back to the states to set limits as how long the railroads can block a thoroughfare. Right now, they can do anything they want. Maybe that'll change. Better news, lighthouse tour yesterday, sold out. We had 91 guests. Actually, they're all around the country. There is a group, the U.S. Lighthouse Society, who see as many lighthouses as they can. They like lighthouses. They loved ours because they could actually go in, climb to the top, ask questions about its, how it was used, what it was used for. Is everything original? Yes. Anyway, showed them a good time. Also, some locals who'd never seen it before. And took up most of the day. It was a beautiful day for it. And shortly after that, VFW held the 9/11 Remembrance. It was, it was a full, I was impressed. It was a full house. It was there to honor the first responders. There were some tales told of where were you when, when, when the towers came down. We had some touching stories. But, and I reflect on how I was a staff officer with the Air National Guard and how our mission, we didn't know what was going on. We didn't know how our mission was going to change. But we did look at the response from the, from the EMTs, from the police, from the fire. And many of those guys were guardsmen also, and we, we had to make some decisions. Do we, if we have to activate these guys, are we taking away from, from their communities? You know, where, where is the best result for the communities if we activate them? Are we leaving the community shorthanded? If we leave them in the communities where they're needed? Are we leaving our mission shorthanded? That is still a relatively unanswered question. But the question, the term first responder didn't exist until that point. So there was a short description of it, and Chief heard it yesterday. First responders, when there's danger, when there's explosion, when there's noise, when there's peril, and we're all running away from it, they're running into it. So take a moment to thank them. We thanked them yesterday. Thanks again, fire, police, EMTs, first responders. Thanks, guys. That concludes my report. With that, we move on to, we have no discussion items, additional public comment, any topic?
My name is Lori Polgar, and I live on Blossom Lane. And I am recusing your support in proposing a township ordinance allowing privately owned golf carts to be allowed on the streets of Groseal in a posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour or under. I recently presented my proposal at the Police Commission meeting, in which some of you were there, and have been corresponding with Deputy Chief Harden. We lived on Groseal for 20 years, raising our three children. My husband grew up here, and two of our children have moved back to the island to raise their families. We love and enjoy the island. Groseal's a beautiful place to live, and I feel as though this would be a great, this would be a positive way getting our community out and about, staying local, shopping Macomb Street, eating at local restaurants, and just enjoying life. We all need to slow down, relax, and enjoy. This mode of transportation would get families and seniors out to our parks, churches, and community events held on Macomb Street. I feel as though there is something different about driving in a golf cart versus driving a car. It makes people happier. You can wave and say hello to your neighbors. There are a couple dozens other cities in Michigan, including Gibraltar, with this city ordinance. Of course, we would, as other cities, have rules and regulations such as a person may operate a golf cart on township streets subject to the following restrictions. Operators must be at least 19 years old and have a valid driver's license. They must comply with signal requirements that apply to the operation of a motor vehicle. Golf carts would not be permitted on bike paths or sidewalks, and occupants would be required to wear seat belts. Golf carts would be required to have brake lights, turning signals, mirrors, windshields, and headlights. All the golf carts would be registered with the township, displaying a decal showing that it is registered. I am sure that this would be a welcome and positive change for Groseal. I have sent out a poll and received substantial level of support and interest. We have many family and friends that would love to see this happen. I do trust that our Groseal Police Department, Township Board, and City Administration can implement appropriate measures to put a township ordinance into effect, allowing golf carts as an alternate form of transportation on Groseal. I do have a copy of the Gibraltar Golf Cart, Golf Cart Guidelines and a copy of my proposal with signatures supporting. I can and will, if needed, supply you with more signatures of supporters. Thank you so much. I'm really hoping and confident we can make this positive change for Groseal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polgar. Other public comment?
Hi, Joe Porcelle. Well, obviously, I mean, you guys did it. You got the band back together tonight. Shady Tree and the Acorns are playing again here at Groseal Township. Everything you say is shady. Carl, did you actually say that Mark Warnock, now, Mark, sometimes as a chief of police, you got to put your feet in the sand. Did you actually say, and I'll apologize to both of you right now, that he took it upon himself, went in the file, and saw no service agreements, then called Dale? Did you actually say that?
That's what I was told.
Oh, that's what you were told?
I wasn't present. I wasn't present when an empty file was opened up.
Now, who told you that? Can you, you guys don't want to answer anything for me tonight.
No, I simply said I don't recall.
No, no, but.
I don't recall. I'm, I believe it was Dale.
Mark, can I ask you, did you go in that file? Did you do it upon yourself? You knew enough? You, Ruth, knew to go in there because we've never seen one in our, okay, no. I want you guys to thrive, both of you, all three of you managers. I want you to thrive in this police department. I do. I'm serious. So I'm not even going to get into that issue. Dale, right here, came to this gentleman right there. That gentleman came to that gentleman with the service agreements. And that gentleman said, we're not, we're not going to sign those. Those are ridiculous. And that's where the deer calling program fell on its face. Nobody's talking tonight. Dale won't answer that, that he gave it to Mark. Mark won't say he gave it to Bill. Bill, would you like to come up? Because I know what Bill told Mark where he can put him, and I don't think that's physically possible. I really don't. I'm serious. I'm not being funny tonight. Nobody's answering my questions. You guys are so suspicious in your answers and how you speak. You're so suspicious. Every, do you wonder why, well, how do you stop this behavior? You can't. You guys are the board. You have that power. You have the end. You guys understand you have the end on most things. You did violate police department policy and the promotions. Many areas of those, you did, you did, but you can. See, you actually can because at the end it says, the recommendation comes from the police commission. Then it comes to you, and you get to pick. So what you do is you just bypass them. That's why these two gentlemen came up to you and said, why would you bypass me and violate the police department? Do you know why I know you violated the policy? I wrote 120 policies for the police department. I might be the only one in this room, no offense to anybody, but maybe somebody here is an expert in policy writing. And I know you guys violated parts of that policy, parts of it. Not once, not twice, but three, you did the trifecta, three times. So how do you stop it? I mean, what do you do? You can't stop this. I mean, these two gentlemen on the end, they're the last, I know things before these two gentlemen, and they're on the board. So the only way to stop this is our democratic process. If you guys think that people aren't going to believe this and know this and remember this, you're wrong. They're gonna, this is not a little ripple. This is going to keep going, keep going, keep going. And how do you stop it? With that 2020 vote. It's the only way to stop it. What's going to happen, I'm telling you, at least four of you are, after that vote, the next day are going to line up at the front door here, and you're going to get picked up by the clown bus, and it's going to take you back.
All right, Chief, you're, you're.
That's criticism, mister.
You're into your three minutes.
That's criticism. You're going to knock me for the criticism?
I just, it's three minutes. It's three minutes.
And that's what's going to happen. They're going to take you away for at least four years.
All right.
Striving for excellence in everything they do.
Your time is up.
Thank you, sir. No, thank you. And thank you for not answering that question for me.
Other public comment, Mr. Carmison?
Well, I'd like to start off on a more positive, friendly note. Would commend Supervisor Loftus for the dialogue that he's engaged in with Riverview, planning for the closure, a possible closure of the Wayne County Bridge. Certainly glad that you're doing that. But just, just for a little background, I represented the Groseal Bridge Company from 2006 to 2011. And I was involved in the planning for the 2007 closure of the Wayne County Bridge. And the issue of the traffic light timing and traffic control in Riverview was, was discussed extensively at that time. And one of the issues that was brought up was the problem that we have with bridge road going northbound or west, depending on how you look at it, that, that that road should be widened to two lanes so that you don't have a problem at that intersection with cars that are, you know, driving across the gravel and then having to split at the last minute. You'd have a much better traffic flow if, if that was two lanes. Now, at, at the time in 2006, Mr. Smoke made a proposal that he was willing to pay for the widening of bridge road. That was in the context of a long-term closure. I'm certainly not representing any of his opinions today. But just for the record, that proposal was made, and the township at the time, I just personally discussed this with the supervisor and the manager at the time, and, and they had no interest in pursuing it. It's too bad.
I believe we did discuss that with, with Riverview on, on getting a lane, a line painted in there so you would have a dedicated left turn and right turn.
Exactly. Yeah, it's, it's important. Also, back at that time in 2006, Mr. Smoke had discussed the, the, the benefits of having the Wayne County Sheriff involved in traffic control. And that, that was something, again, that unfortunately the township didn't, didn't pursue. I hope, I hope you will get an agreement from, from the county on that. Just to quickly follow up on a couple of points that were made about the action item number four. The voluntary service agreement, which is this waiver that apparently was provided from the township manager to the chief of police and then given to one of the deer call, deer call hunters. On this voluntary service agreement, I took some time to try and find out if any other commission on the, in the township had used this voluntary service agreement. I talked to one of the chairman of one of the larger committees that has the most volunteers, said he's never heard of it. I haven't found any evidence that, that this has been used for the township for any other volunteers. So that is something I think that is worth looking into a little bit more, and I'll, I'll do some research on that.
Greg, I've signed it myself as a volunteer. I've signed it myself.
Okay. Well, when the chairman of one of the larger committees says that, with the most volunteers, says that they do not do that as a practice. You know, at least there's a, there's, there's a, a, a practice of not doing it for some commissions. And, you know, I think it's worth looking into a little bit more. And finally, on this issue of the opinion of the Michigan Workers Disability Compensation Agency. I'd just like to know for the record, did anyone from the township talk to the workers, Michigan Workers Disability Compensation Agency Township Manager, did you talk to anyone from that agency? Right. So no one has actually talked to the state of Michigan, to the officials at the state of Michigan, who actually oversee the workers' compensation program in Michigan and who would have the final word on whether or not compensation was sufficient to warrant coverage of workers' compensation. And just for the record, I did talk to the top person in the state. And, and I was told flat out that in-kind contribution does count as, as compensation, and there is no threshold. And furthermore, if there was even a remote issue with, with compensation, the easy solution is just to provide a nominal cash compensation or a check. And then you're absolutely positively covered. But the, the director of this program.
Greg, you're four and a half minutes in.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just.
I took some of your time, but.
I know. And I'm just pointing out for the record, though, that it's, it's, you know, I worked in government for nine years on Capitol Hill for a member of Congress. And, you know, I, I know what it's like to work for, you know, someone who's demanding and, and wants to get a job done. And I'll tell you what, if it took me eight months to get an answer to whether or not these individuals are covered, I would have been gone. I would have been gone. I got the answer in 20-minute phone call, one 20-minute phone call. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmison. Well. All right, all right. You know, you know, you know what matters? What comes out of the courtroom. What, what matters is what the judge drops his gavel on. Okay. Any other public comment tonight? Retired Deputy Chief Bo.
Yeah, good evening, Robert Bo. I actually live in Riverview on Heritage Street. But my connection is with the police department with 31 years.
You're still welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to make a couple of comments of some of the stuff I've seen here tonight, some of the stuff I've heard going on with the department and things going on with the commission. Having worked with Mr. Zalasko all these years, that I've worked with the department, and having worked with Mr. Jurecki while I was there, I, I never found a reason to question their authority, to question their insight or their ability to reason and come to a conclusion on something. Again, I worked with Carl for a long time, you know, working on the police commission. Never had a problem with your judgment or your decisions. And, and I really think that there could have been an answer that, that could have solved this tonight before all this happened. That being said, I just want to say, you know, good luck to Chief Warnock, Deputy Chief Harden, and Lieutenant Pellon. I really respect the police department. You guys got a good thing going here. Just got to keep it going. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Other public comment? Mr. Zalasko.
I'd like to express my gratitude to the people that are here tonight.
I'd like to express my gratitude to the people that are here tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone here who came to support Mr. Jurecki and I tonight, and also for showing an interest in your community. A huge thanks to my colleague Mike Jurecki, who stood by my side with conviction. As former CEO, he brings with him a multitude of skills that were so beneficial in moving the police department forward. Mike, it was a real pleasure, you're a great friend. My thanks to Jim and Tom for giving us support. Thank you, fellas. I would also like to thank my friends of the Grozile Police Department, past and present, for all of your hard work and dedication. Your accomplishments over the past years are too numerous to mention here tonight. You have set a standard for others to follow. To Joe Porcello, winning the safest community in Michigan award eight out of 10 years doesn't just happen. An accomplishment of that magnitude requires a manager that has earned the respect of his people. Great job. It was truly a pleasure and an honor to serve and have served with all of these talented and loyal people. Tonight's actions set a very disturbing precedent for future commissioners as well as board members. It was obvious in the tone of this audience tonight that a lot of us were unhappy. This, my friends, is why it becomes so very important that we empower the right candidates when we go to the polls. It was an enlightening experience here tonight, to say the least. With that said, I'd like to leave you with this thought. When everything seems to be going against you, remember that an airplane takes off into the wind, not with it. We will rise. For me, I will continue to serve my community in the best fashion possible and look forward to working together with this community and moving Grozile into the future. And my sincere thanks to all of you.
Mr. Zalasko, other, other public comment, Mr. Jurecki.
You know, there's a lot of things about working in the public and government that I'd be the first one to admit I'm not an expert at. But what I am an expert at is solving problems. I used to get paid a whole bunch of money for doing that, with a variety of different people, in a variety of different industries, in a variety of different departments within those companies. And the one thing that we did almost all the time, no matter how complex the product we were trying to build, whether it be software with, you know, operations in India, operations in China, trying to get all these people to work together, as well as what we had in Farmington, the one thing we would do 100% of the time is sit down and meet and talk and listen to everybody in the room. Because my job as a CEO, I always used to say, you know, I'm rarely the smartest guy in the room. But it's my job to figure out who is on any given topic in terms of what we are trying to accomplish. And that's where we failed. We failed. I tried hard to get that, that meeting together, Carl, I relied on you as our liaison to get the right people. You failed. I failed too, because for whatever reason, I couldn't persuade you the importance of doing that, Dale. You were a critical part of that. We could have solved this problem to 2019 deer call in about one hour, because it wasn't a great amount of complexity. It was just sitting down, meeting as a team, and trying to solve a problem, and everybody being listened to, everybody being respected. And that's what we failed at. There's no doubt in my mind, I'm 100% certain, and I've done this 1,000 times, maybe thousands of times. So I take that as a lesson. I think you can do better. No longer me, I'm not in the mix, I failed too. But as a chief, as a board circumventing your commissions, where your commissions are really there to do the deep dive, go deep into the woods, and really try to figure out the problems, because you guys are too busy. I mean, I don't think I'd want your job. You, you have way too much on your hands, that's why you have to rely on your commissions. And to circumvent them and bypass them and not listen to them, and they're willing to give up their time and their expertise to help move the department forward, that's a true failure. I blame myself in part, but I blame each and every one of you as well, especially Carl, our liaison, and Dale, you. I'm not picking you guys out for any particular reason, but you are the guys that really have to make that happen, right? Liaison has to make that happen, they got to get township management to the table. That didn't happen. We could have solved this in a heartbeat. So keep it in mind, there's been some good work with y'all, I wish you nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jurecki. Any other public comment? I don't see any. I wanted to take a minute, Dale, would you be good enough to put this on the Elmo? Are the screens coming on? There they are. Okay, Chief Barron will remember that. Somewhere, I think the ink was drying in the oath book after I got elected, and he almost had me by my lapels and said, "What are we going to do about the deer?" And that's when the cull operation started. And that's how well it was received in the community. We took a beating, we took a beating over that. How dare we consider culling the deer? So, 2009. Yeah, I'm sorry, it just has the date, the first, and it's, it was just blather, that was posted on the bulletin board at the drugstore. But it's been our objective, and what I'm really disappointed in, is to keep this as close-hold as possible, which is why it was given to the police chiefs to manage. Township boards stay out of it, township managers as much as possible stayed out of it. We didn't want the publicity that, and I'm just reading about Ann Arbor's group of protesters, Ann Arbor spent $623,000 of the last three years to take out 274 deer, and they had protesters bust in from all around the Midwest. It comes down to $2,273 per deer, if you want to get right down to it. But we kept ours close, I didn't want to splat it all over the public, I didn't want the public to know when we were shooting, where we were shooting, and who was doing the shooting, because it was only going to make the, the, the job as difficult as possible, and it was going to reduce the safety for our, for our shooters and for our community. Now it's all over the place, so I guess that genie is out of the bottle. I, I wish the, the guys carrying on the program luck, and it's going to be hard to, again, keep this close and safe and effective. So that's where we are, and I just thought I'd throw a little background on, this has gone back, I've got a little bit of experience with this, this has gone back a long ways, and people were calling for my head in 2009. So I'll close the meeting with that happy note and entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by the treasurer, seconded by trustee buddy, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Call the meeting adjourned at 11:13, not a record, not a record.